Why is Ms. Anderson there in the, uh...
Yeah, I'm like I said, I couldn't have recert her.
It's a male side.
It's a first time that I've ever taken a decision with a lot. But I go, wait a minute, you know, I'm good to talk zoning just about anywhere south.
Um...
Lions game. Yeah, it came up.
Bring my agenda.
What do you use for houses? They are the three house size.
Why would you turn that down?
The next one I was getting turned down. So we need to get a life. I thought that was so funny. I sat in the Lions game on Sunday and then I sit up at the top and I disable my brother. And so he came up to me and said, started bitching at me for turning down those three lots. We had that three last month. He started yelling at me. And I said, you know, I talk zoning, I'll do zoning spot anywhere except for the Lions game. It's only today. And then, and then I was out on the golf course. There was a guy that lived on Arlington. And they had that controversy. We weren't here before I got here. Four. There's a controversy in Arlington. The one on Arlington? Where the guy bought the lot he couldn't leave. So the guy certainly, yes, he's a neighbor. That was a must drive. Why do you even have, you know, like saying? And so if nothing gets over that cut, it's not.
Our expedition for the central...
I haven't heard anything yet. I just saw it. I'll get this noise. I can hear it. You should say, why did I...
Central first?
Yeah. It's not an idea to have somebody who thinks...
Yeah. They want to...
They want to...
Joe's here.
Hey, Joe.
Game's all here.
He's running toward the front door. I had to drag him in.
Yeah. I said, Doc, I didn't do it this time.
I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Thursday, September 14th, 2017 meeting of the Royal Oak Zoning Board of Appeals. The board does not write the zoning ordinance but does have the authority to grant relief from it where practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship would result. The board will vote on each agenda item following a public hearing. Use variance requests require a, require a minimum of six affirmative votes in order to grant the requested variances. Non-use variance requests require a minimum of five affirmative votes in order to grant the variances. If you would like to request that, the board table or adjourn your case due to the absence of a full board, but we have a full board tonight, so that's not applicable. Petitioners shall do their best to limit their presentations to 10 minutes. Each participant in the public hearing shall do their best to limit their comments to three minutes. And that'll move us along to our first item of business, which is the approval of the minutes for the August 10th, 2017 meeting.
I'll move to approve.
So moved. Support. Second, any comments, additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That moves us on to item C1, which is our first item of old business. This is case number 170822. Public hearing on a, on the appeal of Generation III LLC owner and PDA family enterprise LLC petitioner for the following variances. A, a use variance. B, wave 21 feet of the minimum required 25-foot north setback to allow a maneuvering lane and off-street parking spaces directly adjacent to a single-family residence. C, wave 6 feet of the minimum required 10-foot west setback to allow off-street parking spaces directly adjacent to a, to a single-family residence. D, weigh the requirement that's, that a 6-foot decorative masonry screen wall be constructed along the north property line and portions to the east and west of the property directly adjacent to off-street parking spaces and a drive aisle. And E, wave 1 foot of the minimum required 20-foot distance between buildings to permit construction of two multifamily buildings containing three residential dwelling units each and associated off-street parking in the one-family residential zoning district located at 617 North Edison.
We went through the report last month and held a public hearing.
We did.
So I won't reiterate everything. I think, think some of these topics will come back up in our conversation and as the petitioner comes forward with their presentation. So if we need to circle back to anything in the report, we can certainly do so. I don't know the entire benefit of reiterating everything once again.
Unless there's any points that the board would like to have cleared up at this point before we open up to the petitioner. All right? Not seeing any, it's a petitioner present.
Yes, sir. Anthony Esbeck, on behalf of the petitioners, including PDA and Generation X, Andy Conopata is also with us this evening. Thank you for allowing us to return this evening. We are here to discuss these variances. I guess the best place to start is the beginning. And this project was conceived, actually, from a meeting with the city engineer, Matt Callahan. That, that meeting was memorialized in an email that I'll quote briefly from Mr. Callahan. "A nice lady came in to see about redeveloping the lots where a house burned at the end of Edison North of Farnham. The two proposed new lots require extending the road, installing a public sewer and public water main. The water will be easy to extend, but the water and sewer will be very costly." It became clear from that moment that the only type of project that could be developed on this parcel because of these requirements is the type of project that we hope you'll consider tonight. So because this is what this parcel is faced with, we'd like you to focus on the form and function of, of this project. And the form addressing the type of project, the layout of the project, the characteristics of the project, and the function of the project, as we'll talk about in a few minutes. It addresses situations that exist in this neighborhood, that are concerns, that have been concerns to these residents and the city to some extent. And we think that, that these items collectively serve as a sufficient basis to, to get this variance approved tonight. What I'd like to do is start by allowing Brian Howard, who was helping us as architect in his architect speak, talk to you about the form of the project, and then we'll discuss the function after that.
Thanks, Tony. Brian Howard with HF Architecture here based in Royal Oak. When Tony and Danny came to me with this project, it was pretty clear, straight out of the gate, that we felt that this two buildings, and we, what we did is we designed two buildings with three units per building. We separated these two buildings to create a green space to not make it look like a long townhouse project. The green space between the two allows us to create a nice amount of air and light into these particular units. In our opinion, the road occurring on the north side of it fit this neighborhood much better than wrapping a road around the backside of this development. And the reason why we felt that this was important was it pushed the buildings back off of the neighbors, the neighbors to the north. It pushed them back close to 40 feet off that north property line. Had we decided to change that concept, it would have pushed the buildings 25 feet off that north property line. So in our mind, the relationship of the actual fronts or the front doors of these particular units are much more compatible with the neighborhood and keeping with the idea of a series of front doors that face Edison and front doors that don't face the church parking lot. This is a very unique piece of property. It's 26,000 square feet. Two houses on this particular, as Tony mentioned, will not be able to solve these issues with regards to the health and welfare of the water. It will not solve the issues of the safety, which we think we have solved with our maneuvering lanes. Fire trucks can now go down there. They can actually get down to a house on fire, which was the case that it couldn't happen before. As I stated, the buildings are oriented in that relationship facing north to try and keep them away from the neighbors. But we're also proposing, and this is something that the city ordinance requires, is that we put a 6-foot-high wall along the north property line and then extends down to the east and to the west on each side of this. We feel that if the wall was not put there and we put landscaping there instead, that would soften or create a buffer between the neighbors directly to the north of us to our street slash, um, front door. The other notion I want to bring up is that with our 6-foot screen wall and/or landscaping along that north property line, the neighbor directly to the north on both sides will not be able to see cars parked in front of, on the street and/or in front of their property because the height of that and the way that the sightlines work is they're gonna look over the landscaping or over the screen wall and literally look into the second floor or the second story of these particular units. We kept these units short or lower for purposes of not to overwhelm this neighborhood. We feel two homes, two large homes on this piece of property is not fitting into this particular neighborhood, which are ranches, some bungalows, and maybe a couple of colonials. So be happy to answer any questions.
Brian alluded to a few things, and they're very important things. When we started with this project, we were very excited because the project looked great. It was a unique lot, and we thought we can do something very positive in the city of Royal Oak, which we live and work and play and all that good stuff. The first thing we did is we went to the neighbors. We wanted to introduce ourselves to, to the neighbors, to the neighborhood, and introduce this project to the neighbors. They're all very nice. It's very nice of them to show up today again for the second time in a row. They're, they're nice folks, and we don't want to do anything to disappoint them. In our opinion, we're presenting something that is very good for this street, and there are, there are a couple of main reasons for that. The first one is public safety. When we went and met these neighbors, they told us a ton of things about, about the property and the neighborhood. One of the things they told us that it's very difficult for public safety, specifically emergency vehicles, to come in and out of the street. They referred to a specific incident where the existing house on this property burned down. In that situation, and really why we're even here tonight, if that house never burned down, we, we wouldn't be here in this situation. But what happened was the house burned down, and according to the residents, um, the emergency vehicles couldn't adequately access the property that was situated on the west side of the property. And emergency vehicles and ambulance specifically couldn't get down there and maneuver, which resulted in a fireman being carried all the way down to Forest on a stretcher. They, they brought this to our attention and, and thought at that time it was a very serious problem. We researched the issue by going to the Royal Oak Fire Department. We asked them about this, this incident and the general safety and, and situation on that dead-end street on Edison. We spoke with Deputy Chief Cook, and he acknowledged that there was a, a safety concern there. Not a concern, he didn't, he didn't indicate that it's something that they couldn't do, but he certainly said that a project of this nature with a street or a drive that allows them to maneuver their vehicles so that instead of backing in or backing out with somebody guiding the truck and, and it being a very slow process, in his words, they could zip in and zip out. And it's a lot better situation for them. He also mentioned that the reliability of the water, there's a hydrant there, um, they would immediately connect to this new looped water system that we'll talk about in a second because the reliability of a looped water system is, is much better than this current water main that dead-ends at the end of Edison. So that, the net result of all that was that the deputy chief wrote a letter outlining these things, and we submitted it to Mr. Murphy, and I believe all of you have a copy, and if you don't, I can certainly get you a copy. But he does, you know, corroborate the fact that this project would result in a significant improvement of safety on, on this particular street. The, uh, the critical point is that this project will correct an existing and serious public safety condition on the street. Nothing that we've created or we're generating, but this is an existing situation that only a project of this nature will correct. The fire chief's letter also mentions this looped water system. What that is, is currently, and this is something that the, the neighbors shared with us as well, there is a dead-end water main at the end of Edison. What development of this project will require is that that dead-end is connected to the water main on Farnham, creating a quote, "loop system." We, again, investigated what, what this loop system means, uh, to, to the street and to the neighbors. And in fact, we have a letter, and we also submitted to Mr. Murphy from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. That, again, corroborates the fact that a loop system is a significant improvement in water quality, flow, and reliability because the water is constantly flowing, as opposed to way it was explained is that when they treat the water, um, if it's not subject to a sufficient flow, that treatment, the chemicals, they deteriorate, and it creates a, a poorer quality of water. How this all came up, in addition to the requirement articulated by the city engineer, is that these neighbors complained that the quality of their water was poor, the reliability was poor, and in fact, Mr. Wolf, or maybe you'll hear from tonight, said that, he suggested that there was significant or several examples of health issues on that particular street, and the only common denominator is that this water has, has, uh, they have all been exposed to this water for a number of years. So the public welfare of this water is a significant concern for the street and an additional reason why we became very excited because this particular project would be able to help this second situation. The, another thing, and I'll try to be brief as I can, but the, uh, the next thing that, that we found out from the residents and the paramount concern that they had is that this north Edison remains a dead-end or a no-outlet street. This project guarantees that that will always be the case. Alternatively, if somebody, if a developer was to come and purchase that church lot that abuts the south end of the property, they could theoretically develop both lots and, as Mr. Callahan mentioned in that email, extend the street all the way through to Farnham. That's these neighbors' biggest nightmare. And I, I feel like I'm talking to you, but I also want the neighbors to understand what this project means to them. So this, this project guarantees and, and addresses their main concern. And the final point I want to make is that this project is proposing the exact type of housing inventory that Royal Oak needs at this, at this time. There was a, back in April, the planning department sponsored a seminar that talked about sustainable zoning and the type of housing that these multitude of people that are moving into Royal Oak every month and every year are looking for. And the study talks about the missing middle housing component, which is exactly what this project is proposing to provide. So it's, it's yet another, you know, basis to look at this project and, and look at the positive things it would accomplish. Just in closing, then, I would like to emphasize that, citing this, this TMA study that was commissioned by the city of Royal Oak, that Royal Oak is growing, Royal Oak is evolving, it is changing. And, um, all change is not bad. Positive change, smart change is, is good. We have a fantastic city commission right now, and they are spearheading this effort to change. They just approved, the recent approval of these two office buildings in downtown Royal Oak will result in, in upwards of 1,000 new office workers coming to the city of Royal Oak. This is positive change, and these people will be looking for the kind of housing that's cited in this, in this study. That's what this project is, is attempting to do. It's attempting to embrace this change and the growth that is inevitably happening in, in Royal Oak today. And if this, if this embrace of change is not by itself sufficient for some of you up there or even our neighbors in the audience to get behind this project 100%, you don't have to because the, this project accomplishes so much more. The things that we talked about, the safety, the welfare, the sustainable zoning, the, the little quality of life issues that we'll hear about in a minute, I'm sure, from the residents, the, the garbage pickup, snow removal. This project positively addresses all those things. So in closing, um, I just, I love this part of the, and we submitted also to you, to Mr. Murphy, this executive summary of the TME, TMA Advisory Report. But I just wanted to cite what they say about developers today. Private developers, investors, property owners are encouraged to attend the study. That's nice, they encourage to attend their own study, April 18th, 2017. But they should strive to add new units that align with the missing middle housing typology and that are unique to the city of Royal Oak. When pursuing missing middle housing formats, developers should avoid labeling projects as multifamily, worker, low-income, or subsidized housing. Instead, projects should be envisioned, designed, and advertised based on their form and function. This will appeal to migrating target markets, optimize the market potential, and encourage socioeconomic diversity within the city. Again, that's what we ask of you tonight, to consider the form and function of this project. The form being the exact type of housing inventory that Royal Oak needs today. The function, addressing these very critical things that exist on the street regardless of this project, the safety, the quality of life, the, uh, public welfare with the water. The city's requirement that, that any development of this parcel requires this, construction of this looped water system, an impossible burden unless there is a project of this nature. So we, we acknowledge that change, the prospect of change can be uncomfortable at times. But when you weigh any perceived negative, negative aspect to this project against everything that it accomplishes and all the positives, all the positive aspects that it brings to the table, we submit that it's clear that this change is the type of positive change, smart change, that is embraced and should continue to be embraced by the city of Royal Oak. So it's this cumulative basis, the cumulative impact of this project that we respectfully submit is an appropriate basis for you to grant this use variance tonight.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Esbeck, um, what do you see as the price point of these units?
The price point is about 200 bucks a square foot, which is the price point, I think, of all the resale homes on Edison and in that vicinity.
So you're talking mid-fours?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner at this point? Mr. Esbeck, you keep referring to this water looping as an unreasonable burden for a smaller type project. Can you elaborate on that just a bit?
Yes, we did, we did a couple of things. We, we, um, the district supervisor of water quality from the MDEQ, she referred me to a couple of case studies, and, and hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent by cities to do this very thing, to, to transform dead-end water mains to loop water systems. We went to a couple of engineering firms for this particular project, and, and they went and looked at the site, and, and that would cost upwards of $300,000 to connect this water main. It's, it's a long distance from Edison to Farnham. So that's why it's just, it's impossible unless we do something of this nature. And, and that's why we're here today.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, you made a strong point about the emergency vehicles, but can you explain how that works on the service drive? How do the, how do vehicles get out of the site?
How do they?
How do the vehicles get out? How does the fire truck ingress and egress the site?
Currently? Or with this new proposed drive?
With your new proposed drive? Yes.
So they would come in, and then they maneuver back and then pull back out again. So they are still gonna have to back up and then get back out on Edison. But right now, they have no way unless they back all the way up to Forest. So our idea is...
Sir, can I ask you to hop on the mic?
Oh, sir. Yep.
The people at home can hear as well.
Sorry, no problem. So when we spoke to the fire chief, he, he, he said to us, or he explained, if we pull in, we come all the way down, we can get to the farthest unit. How they will leave is they will obviously still have to back up. They're not gonna be able to loop all the way around and then exit out. So they still will have to back up into somebody's driveway and then, you know, into that Unit 1's driveway, for instance, to then maneuver and get back out Edison. But they will be able to go forward out of, up Edison versus having to back all the way up out of Edison.
Okay, so you're backing out. I assume that you were trying to use that parking to the east there as a point to turn the truck around.
I, I liked the way the chief explained it. He said, right now, if they have to back out, somebody has to guide them. It's a very slow process. I mean, not to be overly dramatic, but that could, critical minutes could be the difference between life and death. But he said, with, with this project, which, by the way, they required that the drive be, uh, these dimensions so that they could maneuver, um, he said they zip in and zip out. That's the way I'd like to describe it.
Thank you.
Can I follow up?
Actually, I have Mr. Curtis, and then I'll go to you.
Well, if it's a follow-up to that, go ahead.
Yeah, it was a follow-up. I'm just trying to, to see, you're saying that it would back, the fire trucks would back into the driveway of Unit 1?
Yeah. So... Yeah. So what they would do is they would, they would, let's just say they have to attend to a, an emergency. They pull down and they have to go all the way down to Unit 6, okay? What they would do when they, when they're leaving is they're gonna back up with all their sounds going off. They're gonna back, correct, where the arrow is there, and then pull out, and then exactly the way Joe just showed it.
But he showed in the parking space, so if there's a car parked there, then they can't...
Well, let's just say there's a car in that, in, let's just say there's a car in this space up here where he is. There's the ability to somebody back up into this driveway down here of Unit 1 and 2, and then pull straight out and go that way as well.
They get to pull in and pull out as opposed to backing.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question about, I think you mentioned the city engineer requirement of looping the water and, and I assume there's also a requirement with the sewer there too to extend or...
Yes, there is an requirement to extend the sewer as well.
Is that for any development, Joseph? Do you know? Is that for any development or for...
Perhaps that was clarified by the city engineer due to a topical conversation that you had with him? Whether it would be your development or anything else?
The existing house that was there, it's just, it was a small little ranch, and the nature of the water and the sewer there now, it's the old, it's been there for 50, 60 years, the old iron ductile, whatever. Any new project is, is going to have to unless it, maybe it's that small little house again it's that small little house again in the exact same spot, is going to need to connect to looped water, loop sewer. And the city, frankly, wants to correct this situation that these residents have been dealing with for many, many years.
Members of the audience, I promise you, nobody's going to interrupt you when you're speaking. I ask you to return the same favor. Any other questions for the petitioner at this point? All right, not seeing any, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and take a seat, sir.
Thank you.
We have already had the public hearing on this matter, so technically, we don't have to reopen it. But I am going to reopen it because I don't want all you folks to come out here tonight and not have your voices heard. So I ask that, you know, like I said, keep your comments to three minutes, and if you can do your best to really bring things to our attention that you may not have brought to our attention the first time, that would be awesome. At this point, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing, just raise a hand, and I'll call on you one by one. I see this gentleman first. You'll be next, sir. I recognize that guy.
James Murray, 623 North Edison. My wife and I, she's lived there for 40 years, I've lived there for 23. And I don't know where they're getting all this information about the water and the fire. And I was a firefighter in the city of Royal Oak for 29 years. And when you pull in there, at night at a fire, there's going to be cars all over the place. It's going to make no difference. You can't back around. He's never backed a fire truck. You can't just back it around. It takes space, and this is not going to alleviate it. Plus, this is going to run right along the requirements of 25 feet for the road that they want to put in there. They're going to put it four feet from our lot line. You know, it's one thing to have a driveway running alongside your house. It's another thing to have a road, a parking lot. And that's what it's going to end up. Because these all single garages, and probably all you know, a single garage is no more than a storage shed. After a while, you get bikes, stuff in there, they can't park the car. There's no room between the garage and the road to park the car on the driveway. They're going to have to park it on the street. So there's going to be cars on that road all the time. They don't want, they, they don't even want to, they don't want to put up the decorative fence now. They just don't want to spend any money here. I hate to say this, but there is a TV program, and it's called American Greed, and that's just what this is. They're not, they're not satisfied with purchasing a lot, putting a couple houses there, everything would be the same, and, and let it go at that. They got, they gotta put this up. They're going to maybe build this thing, and they're gone. They don't have to live next door to it. We have to live next door to the traffic that's, that's going to produce. We're going to live next door to the parking that's on, on the road that we look out at every day. They don't have to live. They're, build it, take their money, and they're gone. They don't care. They say, oh yeah, we live in Royal Oak. They don't live next, next door to the Fifth Avenue either. So, that's all I got to say. We're just, we're not opposed to new construction. We're not opposed to doing things that's right. But the things that they're bringing up, you talk to all these neighbors, there isn't one of them going to say we have a water problem. Yeah, the water gets rusty when they turn the hydrants on, but they notify us. Before they do, we know it's coming. So, there isn't anybody that I know that's died or been sick on Edison because of the water. They're making that a big point. They're making the fire issue a big point. And like I told, I don't know, I told somebody, if I'd known what...
Sir, you've got just three minutes, sir. Try and wrap up if you could, please.
Okay, if I'd known what's going on now, I'd have bought the dang lot myself and been done with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Could I ask a follow?
Sure, absolutely. Mr. Kroll?
Mr. Murray?
Mr. Murray?
Yes?
You've got a question for Mr. Kroll?
Have, have you read the letter from, the, from Mr. Cook, the fire, assistant fire chief?
No, I haven't.
It's, it's in the packet. He kind of is disagreeing with you. So I'm just curious of what the fire department position is on this.
Well, yeah, I know. I read it. I haven't talked to him. I probably should have gone and talked to him and see what it is. But, like I say, I was a, he's been a fire, I think he's been on the job 20, 25 years, which is fine. I was on 29 years. I drove a lot of fire trucks. And I know you get into this mess, and there's going to be cars there, and you can't turn those things around.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And who's next? Yes, I had that gentleman in queue, so.
Good evening. Jeff Coats, 712 North Edison. You know, there's a lot of things to talk about, a lot of little details, but I think I want to get back to just the one main thing on the use variance. I'm sure you're all aware of the burden that the petitioner has to show that the property could not reasonably be used for the purposes permitted in that zone. I've lived on the street for 27 years. We had a single-family house there for 27 years, and I have heard no reason why we cannot have another single-family house there on this piece of property. And unless the petitioner shows that, there's no reason to grant a use variance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, on the aisle.
Brought up the subject of safety.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Ramon Franco. I live at 705 North Edison.
Thank you, sir.
He brought the subject of safety, and this structure is just going to make safety even worse. It's going to bring traffic congestion on the street. If it was hard to maneuver a safety vehicle down the street before, just imagine what's going to happen now. Just like the gentleman said, everybody knows single-car garages become storage spaces. There's probably going to be two tenants per unit. So, I mean, where are those cars going to go? They're going to go on the street. That's exactly where they're going to go. He never brought up the subject of the garbage. How are they going to take care of that? Are they going to have some big dumpster somewhere? Are they going to have individual garbage cans, or what? And he never, he never really made a point to try to solve the, the problems at hand. I don't have to tell you what the variances are, but they obviously do not have the space to build this thing. It's obvious to anybody. Should be obvious to you guys. And, I don't know, it's just, the water issue, I've never had a problem drinking the tap water. And if there was an issue, a $5 water filter would take care of most of the problems. We don't need some fancy turnaround water main or whatever. And like the gentleman said, I never seen anyone get sick. I have a two-year-old son. He's never been healed from the water. So, it just comes down to that they do not have the space to build this thing. These, the 24, 21 feet out of the 25 feet, that's absolutely ridiculous. I mean, come on. Why is this even a topic? It should be automatically said no. This should, you guys should automatically be saying no to this thing. The, the residents don't want it. I mean, it's not, it's, it's a single-family homestead zoned property, correct? Am I correct? Right? Okay. I mean, they just simply do not have the space to build this thing. And a vote to approve this would be absolutely ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous on your guys' parts. I mean, it's ridiculous that they bring this project to this space to begin with. So, but other than that, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Who's next? This lady right here?
She can help.
Yeah, she is.
My name is Betty Miller. I live at 626 North Edison. I guess I have a question for you. What happens if you get, grant them a variance, and then they come back at you, and they want to buy the house next to me because I know they want to sell? Then what? Do we have another extended, now all of a sudden, we have property? And am I going to be like this gentleman over here, where I'm going to be smashed right on top of something else like he is? And as far as the fire went, I told you the last time, the reason that house burnt so bad was because it took DTE, two hours, to come out and cut the wire. That's all I can say, is I just hope that you vote in the favor of us. And what about, they're talking about everybody coming in, what about the people that are left here? The people that have been supporting all of you for all these years? I just, I just hope you listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And who's next? Over here in the back lot, yes. I'm just trying to go back and forth.
Good evening. The gentleman, I'll, I'll be real brief, because the gentleman before me, back there, said it perfectly.
Sir, introduce yourself, please.
Oh, Bruce Copas, 701 North Edison.
Thank you.
The only hardship that we have here are self-imposed. And it's, you know, the, if, if you create your own hardship by trying to put a development in, by changing zoning, or allow the zoning to flip up to the, the next available, it just, it doesn't seem to make any sense that now they're coming to you to try to squeeze this into the lot when the only variances they're looking for are self-created. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, yes, the gentleman's next.
Thank you. Tom McGovern, 708 North Edison. I've lived on this street for close to 50 years. There is no problem with the water. The problem I see is what their original plan was, two houses, which none of us on the block had a problem with. The problem came when it found out that they had to spend more money. That's where the big problem was. They didn't want to do it. Didn't want to extend the street and do what they were supposed to do to make two houses, instead of just putting a nice big house up right where that was. What they're looking to do is make it a ton of money. The road that we live on is a dead end. It's not a very long street, and it has a lot of traffic now. To add six more houses, 30% more traffic on this street with our elderly people and our children makes it unsafe. Just to go down the street. We don't have the parking right now. Their parking lot's never going to work. I'm sorry. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And who's next? Yes.
Hello, my name is Trish Coach at, at 712 North Edison. And a couple of points that I didn't make last time, that I want to make this time, is that, yes, this is a unique piece of property, as the gentleman said. So unique, he needs five variances to make this project work, not one or two. He needs five. First one being to change it from what its current designation is. And again, as my neighbor said, you can make this property a one or two-family house. Property, you know, development. What's stopping it? He doesn't want to spend the money. He, he wants to maximize his profit. He could put up the two houses, make less money, we're all happy. But he doesn't want to spend that money. Okay? I'm not for that. In terms of safety, been here 27 years, I'm still here, and the water didn't hurt me. And if there's a problem with the water, maybe that's something we should take up separately as a city item. That maybe if it is something wrong, maybe we need to talk about that. But I don't see that issue. For the fire hydrant, this isn't the first time this house burnt. This house burnt before. Okay? One of the problems with that was there was no fire hydrant at that end of the street. Now, if there's a problem with fire, firefighting, getting equipment to that house, that end of the street, should have been dealt with then. Should not have taken a second fire for anything else to come up. So if this fire hydrant that they added later wasn't the answer, well, that again, maybe is an issue that we should take up. But taking up those issues now because this man wants to make a buck? No. I say, vote no, we don't want it. That's it.
Thank you. And who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Wolf, 630 North Edison. We are the second house from the end, the dead end. And we do complain about the water. The water does smell. The people at 712 and at the other end don't have it as bad. Betty, next, who just spoke, she has a water filter on hers. And we have done that before. We still do the water and use it, but it does smell at times. It's just something, when you're at the end of the street, it happens. Maybe Jim doesn't have that problem. They're not there all the time. But I'm not against the development as much as I'm against the design. By putting them at the end of the street, across the whole thing, it's like they're not part of us. So, like Trish said, putting a house on either side probably would look a lot better and would fit in. I did suggest to Tony, split it up, finish the street, put half on one side, half on the other, be part of the neighborhood. I don't think he's got enough room to do that either with the amount of condo that he wants to put in there. And I think you said condos would sell for $400,000, which was a median. Is that what you said?
$200,000, $200,000 square foot, yeah.
Okay. Boy, I wish I could get that for my house. But that's what they're putting up, and I understand that. So, I don't like the design. He already knows that, everybody knows it. We do have a problem with the water. I think the city of Royal Oak probably should have done a study with the water, and maybe they're, we're paying the taxes, maybe that's something that needs to be looked into. Because I do believe there is a problem. So, that's my concern, is the water. We have noticed it. We've talked about it for several years. I'm glad the other end of the street doesn't have that problem. That's very good. But the design, changing the neighborhood, changing the appeal, making changes that will impact the city of Royal Oak. And even though, he said, it's each one is on its own merit, you do set a precedent. So, it stays the same. I don't like it. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. And who's next? Going, Danny, yes?
Daniel Yozbeck. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but, you know, it's, it's one thing to disagree with the project, totally understandable, everyone has their opinions. But when you come at us personally, attack us as, as being greedy, that is terribly unfair. You have no idea who we are, what we do in the city. We just presented a check to the Royal Oak Animal Shelter this week for $29,000. We raised over $100,000 over the last five years for the Boys and Girls Club. We had a fundraiser for the Royal Oak schools just this week at our establishment. We hosted autistic fam, children and their families over Arts Beats and Eats Weekend. We do a lot of positive things for the community. So, to present us in a light where we're just greedy, we don't care about the city, we don't care about people, it's completely unfair, untrue, and I just, I couldn't sit down and listen to that and, and let that pass. I'll let Tony finish up, but I just had to let that be said. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Going up? I see a hand on the aisle.
Hi, good evening. Carol Hennessy, 258 East 12 My Road. I just want to follow up with what Danny said. I walked into their establishment one day working for the Royal Oak Chargers and the Chiefs, our, our youth football and cheerleading, and asked for donation. They knew me from nowhere. And we sat and talked, and I have gone there numerous times for Veterans Day, Memorial Day, whatever it's been. And if they've been able to help, they've always been able to help this community. And they have been strong supporters ever since they came here into Royal Oak. And I don't know all the details about the variances and stuff like that, but I believe that whatever they do, they're going to do something that's good for Royal Oak. And I just wanted to let you know that they are good people. And I just wanted to let you know that they are good people in Royal Oak, and they compete, they really care about the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Going once, going twice, all right, I will, up. You already came up, sir. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to this side of the table. Is there anybody who wants to start? Let Mr. Olpak start.
Well, before even looking at the other variances, I think we, the main thing is the use variance. If we don't pass it, what's the use of arguing about the other ones? So although I think this is a very thought-out presentation, a lot of effort went into it, and, and I think they wanted to do good to the neighborhood as best as they could, I, I just have a problem with granting the use variance. So I'd like to propose a motion to deny the use variance as requested.
We have a motion by Mr. Olpak.
I'll support.
Supported by Ms. Anderson.
Going by strictly what's required for use variances, the property cannot reasonably be used for permitted uses in that zone. That's all a single-family there. It would be different if, I could almost see this a different light if it was along a main street, but being at the dead end, changing a single-family thing into a multifamily there is going to totally change the neighborhood, which creates hardships that are self-imposed. So I, I can't see why they can't use that zone right now as single-family. Appeal to the unique circumstances particular to the property, non-generational neighborhood conditions. Again, that's all zoned, single-family now. How is changing it to multifamily part of the unique circumstance? I, I can't see anything there. That the use requested variance would not alter the essential character of the area, it would greatly impact the character of the area. Right now, it's all single-family. You're all of a sudden now making it all multifamily at the end of that street, totally changes how the end of that street occurs. The alleged hardship has not been created by any other person presently having an interest in the property. Unfortunately, they've self-created it. And the use would be preserved to substantial property right possessed by other property owners in the same zone. That one sort of could be argued one way, especially if it's true about the city engineer saying it needs to not be a dead-end loop, it needs to be an actual loop, and potentially with the fire. So that one, maybe. But by and by, the majority of this doesn't meet the requirements to grant a use variance. So by that fault, I can't vote for it.
Do you want to follow, Ms. Anderson?
Well, I, I agree with everything that Mr. Olpak has said. I just, you know, you might be able to bend one or something, but we have to look at all. They all have to pass that criteria, and I don't see them doing that. And I, I just can't support a use variance. I think that the, the property itself can be used for single-family development.
Anybody else? Mr. Croll?
I'd like to take the opposite view. I've had an interesting zoning week, starting on Sunday at the, at the Lions game, with somebody coming up to me I've never seen before and yelling at me on a decision we made last month. Yesterday, I had somebody tell me that, do your job. And obviously, we have a lot of people in the audience here today that also believe that they have a great understanding of what our job is. The, the reality of it is, is everybody here today is here to break our laws. If we're going to just strictly go by the laws, I find very few hardships that we approve or don't approve that come before us, true hardships. I think in some of the newer communities, you get some more of that. I think we've changed our zoning laws so many times, I think it takes, takes some common sense up here, beyond what the rules are, because we know what the rules are. And so everybody can go home, and we can disband, and, and we can, if, if that's the way. But in fact, we are, we are a zone, an appeal board, and people are able to come in front of us to appeal. I want to, I, I love the fact that neighborhoods come out, it, it's, it's great unity, but quite honestly, I try to make these decisions based on kind of an empty audience, because I think when everything's said and done, I've been doing this a long time, and a lot of decisions that I, I kind of kowtowed to because of the, the, the community at large have not been good decisions, and, and others have. So I, I try to neutralize that. I, I was fortunate enough to attend a workshop Anthony and I both attended, maybe a year, year and a half ago, called Smart Growth Report. It was sustainable zoning, and a couple of experts flew in from around the country to, to perform this workshop. Interesting enough, by all indicators, Royal Oak is going to grow from, they're saying anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 new residences in the next five years. And, and that's kind of startling within itself, because you say, where are we going to put 1,000 to 1,500 new residences? This particular project was an example, they showed, of merging multifamily into single-family. And they showed this as an example of how we're going to gain 1,000 to 1,500 new residences. I, I know for sure one thing, that as we all sit here today, anytime that you have demand, you're going to have supply. If you take a look at our geographical location, i- if you look at all the variables of, of Royal Oak, our downtown, our communities, everything going on, I think, I, I think you'd have to sit back and say, we're going to have another 1,000 to 1,500 residences in the next five years. This, to me, represents an opportunity to put six units in a place that would have one or two. I, I have a hard time believing that 400,000-plus-dollar units are going to destroy a neighborhood. As my research says, that's maybe about twice as much as, as some of the houses are worth, and I know some are worth more on that street. But I think on an average, this, this kind of jumps the, the price per unit up on that street. So I have a hard time hearing that that's going to ruin the neighborhood. So those are my thoughts. I, I hope, you know, I, I think as a board, we, we need to, I, I think everybody kind of, and I generalize, but I, but most of the people that come in front of us kind of stand outside their house and, and see the, and see their world, I think we have to see a little bit more of the world. I, I think that's what Royal, the City of Royal Oak is asking us to do. So I will be voting in favor of this project. Or I'd be voting in favor of the use variance. Let's start there.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I respect Mr. Croll's opinion, but I respectfully disagree as to what our role is here. Change is great, but I don't think the Zoning Board of Appeals is here to change the ordinances. We're here to enforce them unless the criteria are met, which would require, which would allow us to grant variances, especially a use variance, and those are stricter criteria. And I don't think this case is justified by at least four out of the five criteria, as I will know.
Any other comments? Mr. Muller.
Similar thoughts. A use variance, that's a huge change. This is a single-family neighborhood. It's even single-family along Campbell, which was an area that might have been multiple use. It, it, it seems that the unlucky situation, and I have, find it hard to say that, is it's a, it's a large lot. I would love to have my house on a piece of property that size. We've heard this a few times lately, that the hardship is, it's a big lot. Somehow, I can't view it that way. You could certainly put at least two houses there. Maybe they could put three, I don't know, following our zoning rules, what you would be allowed to put on. It isn't even that this property was so large that they could come up with a condo-type project and not ask for variances. You know, we're still looking at the use, but they couldn't fit what they want to do onto this big piece of property if they just got the variance changed to multifamily. But we're supposed to make all of those. You can certainly use it for a single-family development. Unique circumstances, I really don't see unique circumstances. If there's a problem with those water mains, that's an issue with the City of Royal Oak. That isn't like, oh, wow, somebody else will somehow get to put this thing in because we let them build a, you know, a, a big project, they're paying for it. That's, that's, that's something tax dollars put all of our water mains and sewers and things in. And if this one's inadequate, somebody has to look at that. But that isn't a zoning issue either. It isn't a zoning issue under any circumstances that the water main dead ends there. That's an entirely different issue. I just can't see where they meet any of that criteria.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts, sure. I, I've read this report too, that says we have people coming to our community, and there is a question about where we're going to put them. And so this interests me, when we look at creative ways to think about that. It also interests me, and nobody said it, I'm happy to, when developers, I mean, God bless America, developers come because they have an opportunity to make money doing development. But it interests me to think about, great, while you're able to do that, what can you do to, to benefit the community? Community benefit agreement, sometimes CBA gets tossed around. Most famously with the new development with the Detroit District, it's been talked about a lot in Detroit. So here's a very real way that this water system and sewer system is a benefit to the community. And I think the safety things are true. I appreciate, you know, one of our members in public hearing had to say about, you know, his experience driving fire trucks, and yet I have from the deputy fire chief a letter that says it is a, a benefit for, for safety. So, yeah, but there are strict criteria, and many of our board members have, you know, pointed out correctly that there are strict criteria. The idea that people have a right to appeal, though, is a very real, I mean, if, if, if we were just here to uphold ordinances, we wouldn't exist, right? I mean, there's a right to appeal for a reason. Ordinances don't fit all the time, sensible projects. So I'm just back and forth in my own head out loud right now, and trying to come to the conclusion is, yeah, it doesn't fit clearly the criteria that is, is in front of, you know, us on appeals. It doesn't. Does it make it a bad project? I, hmm, I think it's maybe a good project. So I'm honestly not sure what my vote is, but we have a motion on the table, so I, I guess we're getting to one soon, so. But, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm willing to, you know, look at this project on its own merit for our community, and I think it's a strong project, so.
Anybody else? Mr. Olpak?
One more thing to add. I, I agree this is a unique project. I'd have less problems with the use variance if it was, like I said, on a main street, or if there was even adjacency to any other multifamilies, where it's almost like you're extending it. It's just that you're putting it within a sea of single-family housing, that it makes it so hard to see why, why does it have to change? What makes this so unique versus something else? And that's the biggest problem I have there.
Well, I'll go ahead and chime in. Like some of the members of this board, looking at the one aspect of, you know, how does this project potentially benefit the neighborhood? And I think Mr. Curtis hit on some of those points very well. I was looking at it as sort of follow-up on Mr. Muller's point. When you dimension it out, it looks like, if I'm looking at the lot correctly, it's 108-foot wide on one side, 106-foot wide on the other side, and 240-foot length going east to west. So simple math tells me that four large homes could theoretically be built on there, hitting our minimum 50-foot by 120-foot, 6,000-square-foot criteria. And I'm thinking that the scale of this project may be better than somebody coming along and building four much larger Bigfoot-style homes on that lot. And I'm also looking at the very real fact that, that we actually do have letters from some of your neighbors. One frankly said, I support it, just the simple fact that I'm getting my water upgraded for free is all the reason I need to support it. And we have that in writing in front of us. And then we also do have a letter, you know, from the associate fire chief, also stating that he has concerns. So the argument that this is a one-sided benefit to the developers and doing absolutely nothing for the neighborhood is one that I don't buy either. I, I, I do see an upside, and I won't be supporting the motion to deny this either. Is there anybody else who wants to speak before I call for the vote? All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to deny signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those supporting the motion to deny, please raise your hands. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six. And then those opposed?
No.
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 Motion carries the variances denied.
The motion carries to deny the variance, that's correct.
And we'll then have a proceed, we'll then have a proceeding motion for the remainder as a formality.
Okay, does somebody want to do that, please?
Mr. Olpak?
I'll propose to deny the remaining variances, B, C, D, and E.
Motion by Mr. Olpak.
Support that, too.
Supported as well by Ms. Anderson. Any additional discussion, sir?
We denied the first one. What's the use of granting the rest?
All right. Anybody else want to speak on this?
Well, once the first is denied, I agree with the use in supporting the rest.
All right, so I will call for the vote again. Again, this is a motion to deny. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that one was unanimous.
Yep.
All right, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to go ahead and wait about 30 seconds, let the room clear out, since there's going to be a lot of shuffling going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much.
Anybody wants to continue talking about that matter? If you could take it, take it out in the hallway, that'd be great. Thank you.
Moves us along to our second item of old business, which is item number C2, case number 170823, public hearing on the appeal of Baker Properties LLC petitioner and Craig T. Grabitz owner for the following variances. A, to waive five, five feet even of the minimum required 50-foot lot width for parcel A, and B, to waive the same five-foot minimum requirement of 50 feet for lot width in parcel B, to permit a land division and create two vacant buildable lots located at 520 Dillon Avenue. Mr. Murphy.
I'd like to take the same approach as, as the prior case, since this was a postponed item from last month. If you have any questions prior to the petitioner coming forward, I can go through, I can answer, try and answer any, but I, I don't know that there's any merit going through the whole entire report once again.
I agree. Any additional questions for Mr. Murphy at this point? Is the petitioner present? Mr. Cowan, good evening.
Good evening. Dennis Cowan with Plunkett Cooney on behalf of the petitioner, and we're here with the owner, Craig Grabitz. We were here last month, and also with Rudy Kachut, who is the, the owner of Baker Properties. You've got my letter, you read the letter. We strongly believe that we meet the four criteria. I'm not going to go through it. If you certainly have some questions for me on the criteria, when you have your discussion, I'll certainly be willing to engage in, in that point. But I just want to make four brief points, just for the record. First, we're here for a simple reason. In 1980, the property owner sold four feet. We had that deed attached. From talking to Mr. Murphy, if the four feet had not been sold, this would have been administratively handled. So we're going from a potential, at one time, in 1979, before the property was sold, a 47-foot lot to 45 feet. I would submit that that two-feet difference is virtually indistinguishable, when you would look at it from any street level. And we will be able, and I do have a survey here, if, if you need to see it, but my client can commit that he can build a home on this 45-foot lot. As you know, there's plenty of homes in Royal Oak build on 45 lots, 45-foot lots and less, even new homes, and will not be back here seeking any variances, because I told them I won't come with them. So he's on his own. No, he, he does not need to build, have any variances. He's built in the community without variances before. He will be able to do it here. Secondly, and this, I think, is the important factual basis to our undertaking here this evening. I think I spelled out that we have 40 homes basically in the I spelled out that we have forty homes basically in this neighborhood. I don't go all the way down to the end of the block, but forty homes in this area on Devlin. Only three are lots of ninety-foot or more. This is not a big lot neighborhood. I've been up before you on big lot neighborhoods and we've had that discussion. This is not one of them. There are ten homes between forty and forty-seven feet. And with the Dennis Cowan seven iron from this house, although some might say I can't hit a seven iron that far, there's at Ardmore right on Devlin, there's three homes. Two are thirty-nine feet and one is forty-two. What I'm trying to point out is that this is a mixed neighborhood of frontages. Uh, but we fall within an easy range of many of these homes, uh, in the forty-five-foot range. Another fact is that these were two separately platted lots. This is a historical fact. From nineteen seventeen, they were lots seventeen and eighteen. We are merely returning them to their historical roots, less the four feet that got sold in nineteen eighty. And finally, just one point I wanna make is that the rules of construction that are in the ordinance right at the beginning, seven seventy point three in Royal Oak say that this chapter and its regulation should be liberally construed for the promotion of public health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and the general welfare. We would submit that a yes vote this evening would accomplish all of those objectives. Thank you for your time. We'll be here if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cowan at this point? All right, not seeing any, I'll ask you to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Olpak.
Once again, just for the record, what has changed since the last time when this lot came before us and we denied it?
Well, I think one important change has been that we've had neighborhood support that we did not have last time. Uh, has the property changed? Has the geography changed? No, it is not. But I believe that also in addition to that, as I pointed out, and I think as you have discussed before, uh, there are a number, uh, there is increasingly opportunities in the community for new family homes. I believe no one can argue that that is not an important opportunity for turnover, uh, in, in, in homes. It brings in more families. Uh, we think that this going from one home to two is an important factor. It needs to occur in the city. And the other thing is, it's a sign of growth. It's a sign of health. It's a sign of prosperity and convenience. And it does impact homes in the area because it does, it does raise property values. And I think those are all things that are allowed for in the ordinance, uh, and that a yes vote will create.
Any other questions for Mr. Cowan at this point? All right, not seeing any, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat, sir, and I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Again, same as last time. You have three minutes to address the zoning board of appeals. Please wait to be recognized by the chair. Is there anybody who would like to speak? All right, seeing nobody, I guess I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the side of the table for, for the discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I feel like this comes up almost every time the, the ZBA meets is to split one of these large lots. And, um, I personally see, uh, the value to having a larger lot mixed in with a bunch of smaller lots. Um, if you have a, you know, the whole city that, you know, has turned into these smaller lots, then it becomes homogenous. But this breaks it up and gives it, you know, a, a variety. And I think that that's important in and of itself. I don't necessarily think a more, a larger, more populated city is a better city. Um, I think quality is better. So I, I'd have a hard time finding the hardship for this, but also I, I, I think that the, uh, the variety, uh, on, on the street has its own value.
Anybody else?
Well, last time I was, um, not for this splitting of this lot and I really truly don't see any difference now. Nothing's changed topography-wise or anything like that. I think it's, it's self-creating. It always has been from the very beginning and that's my thought on that.
Although Mr. Cowan last month gave me permission to change my vote, I think it meets all the criteria for lot splits. Um, I don't think there's a hardship, but I, I do think that the width size and general character of the lots is similar. The width and shape is adequate to allow buildable area because the remaining area is larger than our minimum required area. It's just the frontage that's smaller. And the extent to which other developed lots in the neighborhood have maintained required yards of the same lot and width. And I think it, it does fit in, so that's why I supported it last time.
Mr. Kroll?
I'm going to make a motion to approve this.
Before Mr. Kroll? Supported by Mazuka. Any additional discussion, Mr. Kroll?
Um, I too voted for it last time. Wha-what's changed? I, I, I thought we should have approved it last time, so, um, there's, there's a tremendous mixture in that neighborhood of, of new homes along with the other homes. There certainly seems to be a crying out for twenty-five-hundred square-foot homes that families can live in. And, and again, I, I go back to, what are we doing here? I mean, I've seen us approve in the, in the last year that I've been sitting back up here, I've seen us approve a number of them that are, are probably lesser than this. So, um, I've also seen us not approve ones next door, the same thing. So I, I, I think there needs to be a consistency of how we're gonna handle this. I, I, I think, and again, I won't, I won't create the zoning, but, um, again, it's an opportunity to get another family in the school district and another, uh, house paying taxes. We got a eleven-hundred-square-foot house on a, on a huge lot. Um, I, I can appreciate the green space, um, but I'm, but I think we're looking for some houses. So I, I think this is a reasonable approach to it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll be support, I'll, I'll be supporting it as well because of many of what things you just said. There's wonderful green space right around the, you know, down the block and around the corner. I visited this space and spoke with some of the neighbors and they didn't seem opposed to it. Uh, new housing, it seems a benefit to the community and, and, uh, yeah, it's, it's less than the frontage, but, uh, I think it's a great addition and, and, and in keeping with the community. There are mixed houses, but, uh, yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a good project, so I'm for it.
Yes, ma'am, of course.
With this whole twenty-five-hundred-square-foot home, our criteria is we could, someone can put a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot house on, on a small, on a lot. And if we had a sliding scale, maybe I'd look at some of these differently, but I'm looking at these with the maximum amount that someone can put down and I, it becomes too small. That's why we have a fifty-foot frontage criteria.
Aye. Let me go to Mr. Clay first, I had him, then I'll go to Mr. Olpak.
Those are all excellent points and I'll be in support as well. I think the lots are comparable in size and will be harmonious with the neighborhood. Some in full support.
Mr. Olpak, yes, sir.
Well, splitting this makes it the smallest lot on the block. All the other lots right there are forty-seven feet. Across the street, they're all fifty-one or bigger. Nothing has changed since when we voted it down before. Although I understand the need for growth and stuff. Need for growth is not part of the criteria of passing it, uh, a variance. So I, 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 and, and some of the inconsistencies was with yourself, Mr. Kroll, and going back and forth. But for the most part, this does not create a unique circumstance, uh, other than what can upon by itself. They can use it for a single-family home. People out there still want single-family loans with heart, larger lots. Nothing's changed, so I, I can't see why to, to grant it this time when we denied it last time.
Did you wanna follow up with any comments?
Um, no.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, I will be supporting this. For me, when it comes to lot splits, the, the, one of the criteria that I think is most important, I think Mazuka can really hit upon it, i- is the consistency of the lot sizes with the surrounding lots. The forty-five-foot versus forty-seven-foot, I'm, I think it's a negligible difference. I think getting the, I think it does substantial justice to both the neighborhood and the petitioner, so I'll be in support of the motion to, uh, to approve the lot split. Any other comments? I'll, uh, go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do you want hands?
No, the don'ts.
And those opposed?
No.
Who are the no's? Three? All right. Motion passes. Here, I'll set, gentlemen. Hey, let me get my computer caught up here.
There's more?
There's still people in the audience, I'm guessing.
You guys want.
All right, moving along to item number D1 of new business, which is case number 170930. Public hearing and appeal of Valerie and Brian O'Donnell petitioners and owners for the following variances. A, alter, expand a non-conforming structure. B, waive zero-point-one feet of the minimum required north side yard setback of four feet. Waive zero-point-seven feet of the minimum required south side yard setback of eight feet. Waive zero-point-eight feet of the minimum required combined yard set, side yard setback of twelve feet. And E, waive four-point-one percent of the maximum allowable total lot coverage of thirty-five percent to permit construction of a second story and rear, rear yard addition to an existing non-conforming single dwell, single-family dwelling located at 705 North Dorchester. Mr. Murphy.
I think I'll go a little slower. This property contains a single-family home and a detached garage. It's a forty-foot-wide lot and a single-family home requires a four-foot, for the driveway side requires an eight-foot setback and for the non-driveway side requires a minimum four-foot setback. Together, they need to be a combination of a minimum of twelve feet. The existing dwelling is very close, three-point-nine feet north side yard setback and also a non-conforming seven-point-three-foot south side yard setback, which results in the combined side yard setback being shy of twelve feet as well. Petitioner proposes to add a complete second story and a rear yard addition to this non-conforming structure. And the second story is in line with the exterior walls of the existing structure, so it continues to maintain that non-conforming setback as it elevates, as it goes up. So it does not comply, the proposed addition doesn't comply with the minimum side yard setbacks and the minimum combined side yard setbacks. They're seeking a variance in order to alter the non-conforming structure in a, in a manner which does not conform to the ordinance requirements. So they are seeking the continued waiver of those side yard setbacks and the combination of setbacks. The rear yard addition, the rear ground floor rear yard addition complies with the setbacks. It's the sec, the second story addition to the structure itself, the existing structure, which maintains the non-conformity. At the completion of the project, the total lot coverage, so that's all the structure with the roof line, result in a total lot coverage of thirty-nine-point-one percent. And the zoning ordinance due to this lot size allows for a maximum of thirty-five percent. So they're seeking a waiver of four-point-one percent from that maximum allowable lot coverage. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Yes, ma'am.
So you're saying that the only real change in this property is the allowable lot coverage?
One could look at it in that capacity, yes. There, there is a rear yard addition and I'll, I'll zoom in on it here. They have a new front porch addition and they have a new rear yard addition. That certainly adds additional lot coverage. So the, the ordinance regards lot coverage whether it's one story or two stories or two and a half stories, irregardless. Uh, in this case, if they did just the addition to the existing structure, it would not push it over the maximum allowable. It's the additional ground floor additions that they wanna do. The extra ground floor additions that pushes them over the total lot coverage.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy? All right, not seeing any, is the petitioner present? Please come up.
Model here. Cool.
This might be a first for me, I must say.
Is this the color you're planning on painting it?
Introduce yourselves, please, and tell us about your plan.
Good evening, I'm Brian O'Donnell, this is my wife Valerie O'Donnell. We're the owners of 705 North Dorchester. So over the la, uh, we've lived at this residence since two thousand and eleven. Uh, over the last six years, uh, we've gone from a family of three to a family of five. The current, the current house, it's a bungalow. It's right around eleven-hundred square feet. The addition, as you can see, we're not changing the style of, of the structure much, so still blend in with the neighborhood and everything. Uh, we're just doing an addition on the back. The total square footage that we're actually adding to the rear lot would be three hundred and twenty square feet. And then we're going up, but when we extend the whole thing and do the whole addition, we're going from eleven-hundred square feet to, uh, twenty-one-hundred square feet. So we gain a thousand square feet, which gives us, uh, two additional bathrooms to accommodate our family and also two additional bedrooms. So, uh, the existing I apologize, I'm not good at public speaking, so. The, uh, the existing structure with the garage is twenty-nine percent of lot coverage, so we're adding an additional ten percent to that lot coverage. So it would really benefit our family if we were able to be granted the, the four percent variance to, to allow us to, to get this square footage from this lot and house.
Any questions for the petitioner? Yes, sir.
Has there been any look at how to plan this in such a way that you wouldn't need the four percent coverage because?
Yeah. We did. We went back and forth with our architect a couple times. There is an existing front porch on there. Uh, we were gonna eliminate, we were just gonna take the, the front porch off to, to lose some of the square footage. If we do that, it, it doesn't Yeah, it kinda looks goofy and out of place.
Right now, so we wanted to extend it to make it kind of look, look better, not like a hodgepodge.
So we wanted to keep the front porch on there to enhance it. And then we were looking at that, that four percent too. So if we subtracted four percent off, off of this roof line, it basically won't allow us to do the, the bathroom upstairs. And it also condenses the house enough where we wouldn't have an additional bedroom upstairs as well for the kids. So just, just shrinking that thing a foot screws up all the dimensions.
Any other questions for the petitioner at this point? Mr. Muller?
Is your main roof line the same that's on the house today?
Yeah, correct. It's, this is the roof line here, so we actually are.
So that you haven't really, that hasn't gone up at all?
No.
Thank you.
It's basically like flipping the back up, kind of, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, not seeing any, I'm gonna ask you folks just to take a seat real quickly so I can open up the public hearing and see if anybody wants to chime in. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the ZBA on this issue? All right, not seeing anybody, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the side of the table. Yes, sir.
In a lot of communities, it's not considered a variance when you're expanding up and not expanding out with the footprint. So they're staying within the existing footprint of the building on the north and south side. It's just going up within that setback. A lot of communities don't even consider that a variance, so in my mind, B through D aren't, you know, um, I guess that big of a deal. I know that Royal Oak does treat them as a variance, so I don't see that as, as very offensive. Um, then they explained why they needed the, uh, the extra square footage for the, um, uh, the total coverage of the site, which is also believable and understandable. And all of these variances, I, I think are actually quite marginal and small, so I'd be in consider, uh, I'd be in favor of granting the variances.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a motion.
Certainly sounded like one.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll second that.
Supported by Mr. Kroll. Mr. Muller?
When I, before I saw his model and I looked closer to the plans here, um, again, the same thing, the, the, the first few variances, except the last one on the, um, coverage, I didn't see a problem with. Um, I hate to see coverages go over. At the same time, I think this is somewhat of a creative design because a lot of times when you take these story and a half houses and you add a full two-story on it, it does stand out in the neighborhood. From the front of this house, it's still going to look like all the neighbors' houses. From the front of this house, it's still going to look like all the neighbors' houses. And I think for that tiny bit more, 4%, to have done this and not raised the roof or put a whole second floor on actually has some merit in that it still looks like the neighborhood that's there. So I would be supporting this.
Yes, sir.
I, uh, I tried to look in the backyard and really couldn't get back there to see it. So I, I'm assuming it's not gonna be a problem since you really can't see the extension anyway. So I, uh, obviously I will be supporting this.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Well, they, as, as other board members have pointed out, they're, they're fairly modest requests here for what they're trying to accomplish. And the 4.1%, I'm not keen on that. But I, I can understand in this case, it would give them, for the reason of practical difficulty, to, to move forward with the project. Just want to point out to the board members that when you get tiny lots and then all of a sudden you have to have more house, that's what happens.
Any other comments?
Aye.
Mr. Opek.
I personally don't have a problem with A through D. I understand conforming, uh, trying to expand a non-conforming structure. As you just mentioned, you start to make this really tiny by getting that 4.1%, which is a self-created problem. I mean, if you look at it, this house now will have five bedrooms on a s, not-so-great huge lot. Most places that have five bedrooms, you're looking at a totally different house. So I do agree i, that with all the first ones, I just have a hard problem with that 4.1% because I think you're not gonna be able to use that garage and get back there as easily anymore. And you're only cutting out some of your, it, it's self-imposed. And I, I have a hard time granting variances that are self-imposed that aren't unique circumstances. Self-grant, granted the, brought upon the need for the variance themselves. Sorry.
Did I see your hand, Mr. Clay?
I'll be in support. I mean, I think this is a very modest addition, was designed nicely, discreetly tucked behind the home. And this is actually a case where we do have a hardship to some degree. So I'll be in support.
Yeah, when you brought that model up, it was, I, I actually thought you were bringing my house up. Because the owners that had my house prior to me purchasing it put in the exact same type of addition on it with the same roof line pitch and everything that you guys are doing. And, and it's amazing how much more livable space a very modest addition created. So if I ever walk into your house, I'll know where everything is. That being said, I will, uh, go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, folks. All right, that brings us down to item number D2, which is case number 170931. Public hearing on the appeal of Homestead Construction Company petitioners and James Ryan, owner for the following variances. Waive 785 square feet of the minimum required, 6,000 square feet of lot area for parcel A. Waive 601 square feet of the minimum required, 6,000 square feet of lot area for parcel B, to permit a land division and create two vacant buildable lots located at 630 Millard. Mr. Murphy.
This property has a little over 100 feet of frontage along Millard and the depth varies from one end of the property about 102 to the other end of the property almost 110, as resulting lot size of 10,614 square feet. Petitioner's proposing to demolish all the structures on the site and divide the property into two separate buildable lots. The proposed lots exceed the minimum lot width of 50 feet and the minimum depth of 100. However, they do not meet the minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet. Proposal, proposed parcel A would have a lot area of 5,215 square feet and parcel B would have a lot area of 5,399 square feet. So they're seeking a waiver from the minimum lot area requirement to create the two new buildable lots.
Short tweet? Mr. Croll.
Uh, Mr. Murphy, I have a question. This got, this one kinda threw me a little bit. Because I'm reading that it's wide enough and it's deep enough, but it doesn't meet the requirements. I, I just found that a, a little strange.
Yep, if you add the minimum width and the minimum depth, they do not equal the minimum area.
Who decided that? That seems like beyond logic.
It's been that standard for a while for an interior lot.
Think we should look at?
Well, if you look at the interior, uh, the corner lot standards, we require a minimum corner lot of 60 feet, minimum depth 100, and minimum of 6,000. So it's keeping the, the lots the same, uh, the lots that are being created, the same area, but it's a different requirement for the width for a corner lot versus an interior lot. And of course, majority of the lots that were, we do look at and administratively approve as, in this particular case, where someone's buying a particular property, tearing it down and so dividing it into two. Quite often, what we do is we look at that, well, I refer, I'll refer to it as a compatibility provision in the ordinance. So we're looking at the lots that are being created, recognizing that they're smaller than these particular standards that we've just listed. But the compatibility, are they, the two lots being created same size or larger than those on the block? In most instances, that's the case. But in this particular one, the only variant, the only variance that they need is the lot area.
Mr. Opek then, Mr. Clay.
Mr. Clay, head of hand first, go ahead.
I was gonna say, Mr. Murphy, due to the angled rear outline, is it safe to say the lots to the west are not 6,000 square feet as well?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring that up, see if I got a map here to show, to illustrate what's happening on that block. I think I have. Don't have the dimensions, but we can zoom in and, and you'll, I'll point out which lot we're referring to. You pass it around.
I do have, have some of the dimensions on there. Pass them around, maybe that'll help.
Yeah, Mr. Semcina, just go ahead and hand those to Mr. Muller and he'll hand them around.
The, if you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll, I'll kinda, I'll highlight on the screen in front of you the, the subject property. And you'll see, yes, those to the west that you were referring to certainly are less than 100 feet in depth. So I have no question that this particular property, this one, this one, this one, are far less than 6,000 square feet as well. It's, it's a peculiar circumstance that this particular block has that rear yard angle that you were referring to. I don't know the entire logic behind it, but obviously this house is perhaps one of the old, the oldest or if not the oldest in that area. And, and if that is the case, I would presume that everything was platted around it. So things weren't platted and then it showed up, it was there, and for some reason, things were platted around it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy at this point? Mr. Semcina, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Charles Semcina, on behalf of Dan Bean and Homestead. Uh, Dan Bean actually owns the property and Homestead. And, uh, and Mr. Croll stole my closing statement there with the, uh, when you take the, the allowed width and depth, it still doesn't meet the, the total square footage for the lot requirement. It seems like there should be a more logical connection between those. If you, if your lot is wide enough and if it's deep enough, it should meet the, uh, uh, square footage. I can understand a, uh, a standard for the corner lots being different. But it's just something to think about. It's another unique circumstance with this property. Along with this, uh, property line that runs at an angle, you know, it's not your typical, um, subdivision or planning in Royal Oak. We do have irregular lot shapes in Royal Oak, obviously. But it, it, you know, if, if that lot line in the back of this property had run more, uh, you know, a straight line, you know, we'd be a little bit closer, we'd make the, um, square footage. And it probably was a, a original house in this area. When I was talking to Dan about it, uh, this house was a rental for a long time. It's so small and it's so, in the back of the property, it's really ugly. He saw the remnants of what looked like a chimney coming out, uh, in the middle of the ceiling in the, uh, living room where maybe a, a coal or an old, old oil burning stove was to heat the house. And probably the, uh, you know, it's hard to tell, the records don't go back that far, but probably it was one of the original houses. And planning could have happened all around it. Why it happened in this particular way with all these different sizes and odd-shaped lots, it's hard to tell. But that's a, certainly a unique circumstance here. I, uh, everyone wanted to talk about the smart, smart growth report for the cases you had, uh, earlier tonight. I was one of the participants in that workshop along with Mr. Opek, Mr. Croll, Mr. Murphy and some members of the planning commission. And, uh, you know, very interesting, uh, meeting we had with the experts that the city brought in. And they made a lot of recommendations, there's a lot of information here if you have, some of you have read it. I, I saw you read it. But, uh, you know, the interesting fact is, uh, from their, uh, the experts' conclusions using SEMCOG data about the growth in the city, it, it's in a, only a short time in the future when there's gonna be a need for approximately 1,500 more housing units in the city. And that's why, and that demand has been ongoing. It started in the past. For the last several years, they estimate at least a half percent population growth in the city. We'll have 3,000 more people shortly and another 1,500, uh, housing units that are gonna be needed. So we have people coming before you all the time, like us, and we want to build some housing units. Dan Bean is in that business. He's been before this board many times in the past. And, uh, he's built approximately 60 new homes in Royal Oak. Some of them were on the Franklin School site. And the rest are scattered over, you know, many different areas in the city. And we've been before this board several times in the past. And this board has granted variances and Dan Bean has made some representations to the board. He's always proven true. He's come through with his promises. He's kept his word. He's got a good reputation with the different departments in the city. And the reason I say that is there's always some fear, and we've, we've talked about this before, of a 3,500 square foot Bigfoot house, you know, being squeezed into some lots once the zoning board, you know, grants a variance. And, but that's not the case here. It's not the case with Dan. Typically, he builds appropriately sized homes that fit into the neighborhood, that aren't too tall, that aren't too big. A lot of the houses he's built, um, are 2,400 to 2,600 square feet. What he does plan on doing here, and he has plans if you do want to see him, but there'll be about 2,000 square foot homes on these two lots if the split is granted. The garages will be front-loaded to make better use of, of the, uh, smaller square footage, keeping an appropriate-sized front yard and backyard. The, the property, um, the properties immediately behind our property are much deeper. And if there was anyone affected by a small lot, it would probably be the people on Amelia. But their homes are built appropriately close to, closer to the street. They have deeper back lots. Any hu, house built here on Millard on either of these two lots will be an appropriate distance away from the houses immediately behind them. There are 50-foot lots, um, immediately to the west. And, uh, there are all different size and shapes of lot in this area. You know, granting a split and having two 50-foot lots here would not, uh, alter the character of the neighborhood because the character really is a neighborhood with different sizes and shapes. Meeting the 50-foot minimum, I think, is the most important criteria because I, I always felt the width is, is what people see from the street, what you look at. And this will bake, makes the minimum requirements. When you have, some houses can be built on even smaller lots. A 47-foot lot, for example, that, uh, was just approved by, by the board. This board granted a variance for Dan in the past on, uh, Catelpa for a 35-foot lot. And he built an appropriately sized home and it looks good. It was another unique circumstance where the lot was, uh, an odd shape. You know, it wasn't a regular-shaped lot like, just like this lot over here. The when we look at, uh, an old home like this and you look at what the benefit to the, to the neighborhood would be if the, um, if the property is allowed to split, we're gonna be taking an old rental home that's positioned way in the back of the property that probably can't be remodeled or retrofitted, that it's just so old. And it's so far back, typically in addition, we'd put on the back of the house and the house is already in the back of the property. It would probably remain a rental house. There's not much more use for it. On a lot with an empty lot next to it, no driveway, and instead, we could provide two nice new homes that would be in character and size with the homes in the neighborhood. It wouldn't be, uh, much bigger than the homes in the neighborhood. And it would be an upgrade for everyone involved. The when you look at the property, it looks like there's an empty lot next to the house. And without, without a variance to allow the lot split, that would prevent the use of that property to have a home where people can live. I think there would be substantial justice, not only to the applicant, but to the rest of the people in the neighborhood, to get rid of this old little rental house and, and upgrade. The unique circumstances or hardship are all created by this, this very odd plating and how the things were platted around it and the, and the odd shape of the lots all around it. The size and width would still be in, in consistent with the character of other lots in the area. And, uh, there is adequate building area on this lot for a 2,000-square-foot house. I think that it's a, this is probably, uh, a classic case for a variance to be granted in a lot split, uh, in Royal Oak. And that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Any questions for the petitioner? Yes, sir.
The houses that are, you have plans for already, not saying that those are what you would build. But, uh, would those houses require any additional variances?
Yeah, I should point that out, there, there would be no other variances, no setback variances. They would consume a little bit less than 29% of the, uh, lot, remaining lot area. So they'd be well smaller than, you know, the lot coverage that's allowed. And, uh, uh, there wouldn't be any other need for variances. It would fit in nicely.
The questions? All right, not seeing any. Mr. Semcina, if you would take a seat real quickly and I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the board on this issue? Not seeing anybody, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the side of the table for additional discussion.
I'll move, uh, to grant the variances as requested.
We have a motion?
No support.
Second? Any additional discussion, sir?
In this case versus the other ones, I actually think this is a unique circumstance, especially with that angled back there. These lots on this, on these actually have to meet the width and the depth, yet because of the angle, they don't meet the lot coverage. And the ones adjacent to the west also don't meet that lot coverage. So I think it is keeping with the neighborhood. If the houses that he bring, plans on putting there actually don't meet variances, that means they're not gonna be overly sized, so you're not gonna create something that doesn't fit in. So because of this, I, I don't have a problem with what he's requesting.
Any other discussion? Mr. Croll.
Yeah, I, I will be supporting this as well. Um, this actually has a hardship to it, so I, I can get behind it.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna support it for all those reasons. And I'd also point out that as the house currently sits, it's a non-conforming use because it's too far back on the lot. So it will improve the look of the neighborhood, I think.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Chair, I'm gonna go against everybody here, it sounds like. Look at the second case that we heard tonight. You know, this, this is the largest lot between Rochester and Blair. Uh, every other one is, is of the same width. I think it's, you know, this has character. And it really adds to the street to have, to have a lot this size. And since big homes are, are so popular nowadays, I can see a really nice large home on this lot here, so, thank you.
And if this didn't have this 50-foot frontage on both lots and the 100 feet deep, I know that it's, it's kind of unusual for that 6,000 square foot minimum. But that's the only reason I'm supporting it. If it was any less than that, then I, then I would have to, to pull my support. But that's my thinking and my criteria. I think it, it fits, so.
And I'll be, so, Mr. Clay, go ahead, sir.
I'll say I'd be in support too, for all the reasons pointed out. Mr. Bean is a reputable builder. He actually split the lot that I currently live on. I bought the old house, he put up the new house, and it was a high-quality build too.
If there's any, not seeing any, I will, uh, go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
No. I can tell Chris voted no.
Thank you both. That was quite the no.
Yeah. Just so, so awfully.
He's trying to get it to Dallas, too.
Almost sounded like it.
No.
All right, so that moves us along to item new, of, of new business, D three, case number one seven zero nine three two. Public hearing on the appeal of Royal Oak Housing Investments One LLC. Petitioner and owner for the following variances. WAVE three-point-five feet of the minimum required, twenty-eight-point-five-foot east front yard setback related to the construction of a single-family dwelling. WAVE twenty-two-point-one feet of the minimum required, twenty-five-point-eight-foot south setback along Sherman Drive related to the construction of a single-family dwelling. Allow an open porch instead, um, excuse me, C, to allow an open porch and steps to extend into the minimum required, eighteen-point-eight-foot south setback and measure three foot from the property line. Item D, wave twenty-two-point-eight feet of the minimum required, twenty-five-point-eight-foot south setback along Sherman Drive related to the detached accessory structure garage. And E, wave the minimum required ten-foot clear vision setback for the driveway along Sherman Drive to permit construction of a two-story, single-family dwelling and a detached accessory structure garage located at three one five Maxwell. Mr. Murphy?
This property is located on Maxwell at the corner of Sherman. It's not only a corner lot, it's a rather irregular-shaped lot. It has a lot area of five thousand and seventy-two square feet. Has a single-family home with a, a single-family home, and the petitioner is proposing to demolish that and construct a new two-story, single-family home with a detached garage accessed off of North Sherman Drive.
The ordinance requires a front yard setback along Maxwell equal to the property to the north, which is four oh one North Maxwell. And that, that property has a front yard setback of twenty-eight-point-five feet. We're measuring that to the nearest point of the living space, not the partially enclosed front porch, measuring it to the nearest point of the living space. Petitioner has a front yard set, proposed front yard setback of twenty-five feet, so they're seeking a waiver of three point, three and a half feet of that minimum setback equal to the house adjacent. And again, due to the orientation of the property to the west along Sherman, the property requires a setback along Sherman equal to the house to the west at nine two zero Sherman. So I've shown that on the aerial photograph. And the petitioner proposes to have a three-point-seven-foot south setback. And the ordinance requires a setback equal to the house to the west, therefore the petitioner is seeking a waiver of twenty-two-point-one feet from the minimum setback of twenty-five-point-eight, which is the setback of the house to the west. The single-family home would have an open porch and steps at the southwest corner of the structure. The ordinance allows for porches and steps to project into that setback, twenty, of twenty-five-point-eight feet, no greater than seven feet. Under this scenario, the porch and steps would be able to be no closer than eighteen and a half feet from that south property line. At the nearest point, the proposed, the proposed, proposal is three feet from the property line. Therefore, the petitioner needs a waiver in order to allow an open porch and steps, and steps to be as close as, as three feet from the south property line. There's also a detached garage that's proposed, uh, that would maintain a setback along Sherman of only three feet at its nearest point. And the ordinance requires not only that the house, but any detached garage be, have a setback equal to the house to the west as well. So the petitioner is seeking a waiver in order to have a garage in its position. Additionally, the garage, due to its placement and proximity to the property line, it's within the clear visibility requirement or the triangle at the intersection of a driveway and the public sidewalk. And of course, as hopefully the board remembers, that visibility triangles is to allow for someone backing out of a garage to have at least some amount of time and, and space to see someone coming down the sidewalk, a pedestrian, a cyclist, what have you. So they're seeking a waiver to eliminate that minimum ten-foot clear vision setback along Sherman as well for the proposed detached garage. We can go over some of the drawings that the petitioner has and, and review the aerial photograph if that would be helpful as well to get the orientation correct, because a lot of the variances are based on the orientation.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy, Mr. Clatt?
I was going to say, once we apply that twenty-five-point-eight feet to that Sherman side setback, is there much of a building envelope left?
I haven't done an exact calculation, but my guess would be essentially no.
Mr. Murphy?
Um, it doesn't exceed the, uh, coverage of the lot. I was surprised by that, so that's, that's one thing.
No, it, it didn't. I believe it was right at the maximum.
Okay.
Which is what we typically see nowadays.
Uh-huh. Yep, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Opek, did I see your hand, or?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not seeing any, is the petitioner present? Please come forward.
Uh, my name's Eric Walstrom, uh, with Alexander Real Estate and Building Company, uh, representing Royal Oak Housing Investments. Um, just wanted to go over the project. Um, the owner of the property has owned the property for, I believe, two and a half years now. Uh, it, before, um, plans went in to have this property, go in front of, um, ladies and gentlemen here, uh, it was a rental property for two and a half years. Um, it, just recently in the past, uh, five months, there was a problem with the sewer line. The main sewer line, uh, did not extend all the way to our property. Um, so there were, we actually tied in to the neighboring property, uh, and there was some backup problems throughout the entire tenancy. Um, there was an issue with the neighbor's property where he was having backups a lot more often than us because we were sitting a little bit higher up in the property. So, uh, the city determined that that line should be cut. Um, the line was cut, uh, to install a new line to the northern property while our property, uh, was sitting just cut. And so there was a lot of sewer backup in the, uh, existing basement that caused a ton of damage. It was a finished basement down there. All of that had to be removed, remediated. Um, and so the, the owner decided that it's probably time to move forward with a new construction property, with a new foundation, new basement. Uh, we've done, uh, I think sixteen or seventeen new construction homes for this particular client in the area. Uh, we try and stay with, stay away from variances as much as possible, um, but we believe that there are hardships and reasons for variances in this property. Um, I'll just list those out. Uh, we did think of lot coverage, uh, when we were designing this property. We did not want to exceed that because we, uh, we knew that, you know, getting a twenty-four-hundred square-foot house, which is what is proposed right now, uh, certainly meets the, the needs for any, uh, future buyer for the property. Uh, so those hardships, um, obviously, number one, this is a non-conforming lot. If it was, uh, I think it's forty-seven wide at the, uh, at the Maxwell side of the property, and then it whittles down to about twenty feet, uh, towards the back of the property. If that was straight down, we would have no variances, no problem, uh, building this property as is. Um, these variances are not in any way detrimental to the neighborhood or neighbors of this property. There is actually all-new construction homes around this entire, uh, surrounding area. Every single adjacent property except for the northern property is a new construction home with, uh, new foundations. Um, and, uh, these circumstances are inherently unique. The, uh, the owner of this property did not change anything. These were inherited problems with obviously the, uh, non-conforming lot. Um, also, the lot, uh, whittling down to twenty feet, and, uh, also the fact that it's a corner lot. So it has actually two kind of front yard setbacks. Uh, normally, uh, has the twenty-five minimum requirement for a front yard setback, but because the property to the north is a little bit further nor, or a little bit further back, we needed to meet, uh, the twenty-eight and a half, uh, feet. And then the southern side of the property has, uh, another, uh, kind of front yard setback. So, uh, that would, you know, create a, a unique property in this circumstance. Um, all of those things definitely create evidence of practical difficulty for the owner to enjoy his property like his neighbors. Uh, the neighboring properties at three zero two Maxwell, which is the southeast corner of, uh, of Maxwell and Sherman, was also granted very similar variances for this. They build a much larger structure. Their lot was a little bit bigger. They, um, uh, they reached for a variance and was granted a variance on lot coverage. We're not, uh, going for that. We're trying to build a conforming structure, uh, to the houses around it, uh, that, that fits within the, uh, the lot that we're given right now. So, is there any questions? Uh, I'll answer them.
Mr. Clatt?
I understand the Sherman setback, but is there a reason why you can't comply with the Maxwell or the east setback, the front setback along Maxwell? Figure three-point-five feet off. It looks like that was your intent to comply per your site plan that was provided.
Yeah, so when, when we were, uh, designing it, uh, we, we were going off of the front porch, uh, because we thought that that was going to, we thought that that would count as the setback, uh, for that property because it's partially enclosed. Um, I think it's, you know, it may be possible, um, to, uh, to reduce this a little bit or reduce that porch size, but, um, yeah, we were going off of the northern property, partially enclosed porch as the setback. And also, any new construction home being normally twenty-five feet is the minimum, and now it's going in excess of twenty-eight feet and a half.
Thank you.
I'll point out that they wouldn't be capable of simply shifting the house further, uh, shifting the whole structure further west to meet that front yard setback due to that pinch point here. They, they then would need variances associated with that, so it actually had to be some type of modification to the structure itself. You couldn't, we'll say, just shift the whole thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Forgive me if, if you covered this because I had to step out for a brief second.
Yep.
But if you took the garage and attached it to the house, would you need the variance for the driveway?
Um, no, we, we wouldn't need the variance for the driveway. I, I don't think so. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure on those calculations. I think the calculations for the garage are, uh, what, Joe, what's the needed setback for the garage?
It's related to, when someone's in this particular, and I'll, I'll zoom in first before I go a little further with that. Someone pulls into this segment of the garage and they're backing out, there's that ten-foot triangular area in this, at this portion, which if a car were backing out here, they wouldn't be able to see. If the garage were, if the garage were attached to the house, that would, depending on how the driveway was situated, that could very well eliminate that variance. It could very well eliminate the variance or reduce the variance for the setback off the property line. But it would, it would very arguably reduce or eliminate the variance for the clear vision.
We, we did talk about moving the, or attaching the garage. Uh, the main reason for that, not doing that is to give some sort of backyard. So if we attach the two-car garage, uh, it, it just kind of creates a, um, you know, not, not very pleasant-looking property with the, the backyard being all the way, uh, on the side of the property. We talked about moving the garage all the way to the back of the property that, but then we would be requesting an even further variance, um, if we went all the way to the west side of the property. So, uh, this was kind of our, our best, uh, our best outcome, to have some sort of backyard, uh, right as you exit the property and then your garage space, um, within the requirements from the proposed garage to the house being, I think, fourteen feet.
Any other questions for the petitioner at this point? All right, not seeing any, sir, I'm going to ask you to take a seat real quickly so I can open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the ZBA on this issue? Yes, sir.
My name is Gerald Miller. I'm the one that lives in, uh, four oh one Maxwell, and I've been there forty-one years. And, uh, one, I, I like the idea of a new house, uh, but the grade there is so much higher. My garage, with, with his garage setting there, uh, people that owned the property before me, one built a deck on the back. Next person poured that cement pad in the sidewalk. They didn't dig it out, and they just brought in field dirt and backfilled against my fence. So that lot right now next to my garage is about this much higher than mine. And, uh, runoff from the gutters because the garage got to have gutters. Is there any way that they could route it to the back of the garage and not towards my garage so it doesn't flood my garage because that lot is so much higher than mine? Or if the builder could grade that down a little bit? Because it's been built up by previous owners. But that lot always was, it's the highest lot on Maxwell, between Sherman and, uh, Park Street. Because with the demo, I suppose I could take that level down a little bit. But that's my main concern is water running into my garage from the runoff from that, uh, structure there.
Well, that's a question we will certainly ask him.
Okay, and attaching the garage to the house, too, he could have a, a nice master suite above the garage over there if it's attached. But then the, is it possible for him to have his garage come in from the side if it's up by the house? Because then they could still have a backyard at the back. It's a possibility, too. But I'm all for a new house. That one's, so is everybody else in that neighborhood. Okay. And, but parking is a problem there, too. There's only one spot in front, and there's no parking on Sherman Drive. So the only parking they would have is in their garage and that little bit of driveway. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
My name is Bob Corey. I'm at eight thirty-one Park, just down the street from this place. Um, I, too, would love to have a new house. This, this thing that's on there now is terrible shape. Um, when, with the garage, you were talking about the, the setback. Um, one of the things that I've seen with these odd-shaped, uh, where the garage is, is the people tend to park on the sidewalk. You know, they pull in, there's not enough room in the driveways or such, and so they park so there's a block in the sidewalk. And I walk up and down that sidewalk all the time. And so if, if there's not enough room for these cars to get away from the sidewalk, then I, I would say no to any var, you know, any of these variances. Um, and, and the other thing is, when a car is coming down on Maxwell Avenue, uh, there's a four-way stop sign at, at that corner, but the cars coming down Sherman tend not to stop. And with, with a house so close to Sherman Road, you know, I mean, it's somewhat close now, but it sounds like it's even going to be closer. Uh, you can't see the cars coming, coming up, uh, or across on Sherman. And so to me, it's a safety, or potentially a safety issue. Um, this, this lot was actually not a separate lot to begin with. It was split from one of the other lots, uh, and one of the reasons it's so small. But that's it.
Thank you, sir.
If that lot was all part of my lot at one point, according to my deed, they split back in the forties. It was all lot one forty-seven at one time.
Anybody else? All right, now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to this side of the table. If you want to come up and talk about a couple of the concerns that were raised, that'd be great.
Uh, yeah, so to the concern of grading, uh, yeah, absolutely. We will, uh, regrade the property. Just like any new construction, we try to conform to any neighboring properties for runoff. Uh, this property does sit on top of a hill, so, uh, you know, the, the three or five feet, I think, what, uh, are, is approved for gutters, we will run them away from your property towards the, the new sewer line that they just installed on that street and in the new paved street. Uh, and then concerning, uh, that, that did bring up a good point of the, the cars and the parking, uh, that was one of the reasons why we did not do an, a, an attached garage because then you would be turning directly into your garage, and you would really only have your garage space for parking. Um, so this plan actually puts the garage further away, allows for two cars in the garage, and then excess, uh, space in the driveway for additional cars. Um, we could also, uh, you know, put an extra, uh, concrete lip off, off the back here. Um, that would make it easier for, um, backing out and then turning onto, uh, onto the Sherman Street. So it would, I think, eliminate, you know, some of the concerns with cars being parked on Sherman Street, so.
Any other questions for the petitioner while I set the microphone? Not seeing any, go ahead and have a seat, sir. I'll bring you back to the side of the table for additional discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a question for Mr. Murphy. Um, if this, if the detached garage is attached to the house, then it starts becoming a detached, and then therefore it doesn't have to meet the twenty-five-point-eight-foot setback, I think. Sorry to put you on the spot.
E, Henny, well, it also would depend on whether they had living space above it, but any portion, uh, any structure, whether it's the house or detached garage or not attached garage, all of that should have to meet the setback of the house to the south, the house to the west, which is...
Right, so in, sorry, so in essence, you know, it doesn't matter. The variance would still be required for that portion of the house. It's still gonna be encroaching into the setback.
Yeah, variance either way. Variance would, variance is either way.
Okay. Well, I'd like the record to show that, uh, I am in favor of granting these variances, Mr. Kroll.
Emotion?
Not yet. Um, no, it's, it's just, it's, it's a pie-shaped property. It's extremely difficult. The only thing that, that gives me heartburn, uh, would just would be the safety factor, um, of the detached garage, um, along the, uh, the sidewalk. I'd like to hear what the other board members have to say about that. But, uh, other than that, um, uh, the other variances, uh, I, I would be in favor of, so, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I walk by this corner all the time and drive by it, and I'm very concerned about the size of the structure and the, um, ten-foot clear vision area. Um, it is a hardship, this lot shape, but I think they can build a much smaller house. Doesn't have to be that big. I think the house to the west of it on Sherman, they're, they're, they complied with all the ordinances when they redid their house, and now this house is gonna be blocking their whole vision of, um, Maxwell. And I just, I have a problem with it being that size on that kind of lot.
Any other comments? Mr. Olback?
I'll make a motion to grant all the variances as requested.
Motion?
I'll second.
Second? Do you want to follow up?
Uh, A through D, I don't really have a problem with. Um, I, I understand, A, they were trying to align the porch with the other porch, a, and I like having that aligned better than having the setback as what's required. I do have a little bit of heartburn with E, that one I'm still wavering with, but I don't know if there's any good solution in here other than just not having a garage. Um, that's my thoughts. This is a very unique property, very unique circumstances.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I think that have, having the garage detached from the house breaks up the structure. If it was attached, I think it just, it would look like a monolith. So, I think that, that kind of helps.
Anybody else? I'll be in, in favor of this motion. You know, the simple reality is at some point in time, somebody at City Hall signed off on this lot, and that certainly, uh, isn't the property owner's fault. It is what it is. And I think the property owner made a point not to build it above and beyond the allowable percentage lot coverage so that he wouldn't be asking for that. So to, to your point, Ms. Zooka, and I, and I hear what you're saying, but I don't think it's fair to say to this property owner that you're gonna have to build a smaller house than everybody else based on the percentage lot coverage that we allow because you happen to be on a very odd-shaped lot. I think that would be putting an undue hardship onto the petitioner that we should not be imposing. Are there any other comments? Mr. Muller?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, um, I know that it fits within the buildable area, but because of the, um, setback requirements, that's a problem. And that's what my size issue is, because it's too close to Sherman. And I do think it obstructs view too much, especially now that Sherman is paved and cars are whipping up and down there.
Mr. Muller?
Yeah, my biggest issue would be the, uh, ten-foot clear vision, but I don't see any way that you can possibly do it on this lot. And you have to have off-street parking. You must have off-street parking. Um, so I think this is one of the weird cases where you don't have much of a choice on that one, even though you don't want to see it. It's like, what do you do? You could say, no garage, no driveway, but actually you have to have the ability to park so many cars off the street as a requirement also, right? Yeah. So, yeah, it, it's almost like you'd have an unbuildable lot if we had to push that requirement at this point.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm gonna support it, but I really don't like it. Um, I have a lot of the same concerns, um, as that side of the table. Um, I, I kind of came in and said, why don't we just leave the house alone? But after hearing these two gentlemen say, God, we're, we're thrilled to have a new house, I'm, I'm gonna back off that position a little bit. But, but yet, uh, it, it does seem like trying to do, it, it fits the neighborhood. I mean, in the neighborhoods of larger homes, and it kind of looks weird, surrounded by everything that's new. Um, but I don't love it, that's for sure.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I understand the safety, but having some bit of green space in rear yard is justifiable. So I'll be in support. It's a regular lot. It's an awkward lot, and I think they, they did the best with it, so I'll be in support.
Mr. Waller, has there been any thought given to perhaps mounting some sort of fisheye-type mirror at the corner of the garage to create visibility for people going in both directions around the, because of the lack of the visibility triangle?
Uh, we, we haven't discussed that.
Go to the microphone, please.
Uh, yeah, we haven't discussed anything like that, um, but that can certainly be brought to the table whenever there's a, uh, a suggestion like that. Uh, the, the owner of the property is definitely open ears, so I think that is something that we can definitely discuss. We did discuss the, the driveway portion, so instead of, instead of just pulling out of the garage, having that, being able to back out and then turn gives you a little bit more visibility so that you're not just pulling straight out from the garage and, 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 you know, getting immediate view and half your cars out in the street. Uh, so that was one of the, uh, things that we talked about, but we did not discuss.
I mean, I would say, I, I don't want to stipulate it because I don't know if it's really practical to do something like that. I'm just trying to think, you know, is there something, you know, as you're looking at it, maybe just in the back of your head, maybe we can do whatever, just to sort of increase whatever visibility we can.
I think one of the things with the garage, uh, was the, the back-out factor and actually being able to back out and then turn and so that you can see cars coming, uh, and you're not just backing out straight from a garage and then being, um, able to see something. So that was the thing that was discussed.
Yeah, Mr. Kroll?
Is this a, um, are, is this being built for someone or is this a spec house right now?
Uh, right now, this is a spec house, so this is not being built for someone.
I think I have the same concerns as, as Zooka does on some of those setbacks. Definitely, definitely the vision.
If there's nothing else, I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I think it was the two ladies. You are all set, sir.
All right, thank you so much.
And Mr. Corey, to your point, I do a lot of cycling from the north side, and I, I go down Maxwell to Sherman so I can head into the downtown. That's one of the corners that I always look out for. People on Sherman do not stop. So I hope you guys call the police and start trying to get some enforcement over there because you are absolutely correct. That is a dangerous intersection.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself from this case here as my company has direct involvement.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us down to, uh, case number one seven zero nine three three, public hearing on the appeal of Krieger Klett Architects, Inc., petitioner and TJ, T&amp;J Investments LLC owner for the following variances. I think, Mr. Murphy, rather than reading all these into the record, I'll let you address them one by one.
No problem. I'll remind the board that back in April, the board had denied some variances related to the demolition of this building and the construction of a new eight-unit multifamily structure. Again, those variances were denied. Peculiar circumstances followed thereafter led us to the case here today. The property maintained a rental license for six dwelling units and operated as a non-conforming use in the one-family residential district. Under the zoning ordinance provision, nonconformities are allowed to continue under certain circumstances until they're discontinued or removed. And the zoning ordinance does permit ordinary repairs such as the replacement of fixtures and wires and plumbing. However, the repairs shall not exceed fifty percent or more of the state equalized value of the SEV. Where the nonconforming status applies to a structure or land in combination, the removal or destruction of that shall eliminate the nonconforming status, and anything new needs to conform to the ordinance requirements in the one-family residential district. So shortly after the April ZBA meeting, the petitioner's contractor submitted for various permits for interior demolition, windows, siding, and roofing. According to the petitioner, the interior demolition has only removed the material from the studs and the walls have not been, have not been removed or moved. But you can, can see in the report in a comparison of the existing floor plans of the structure in comparison to the proposed floor plans that the petitioner intends to modify the interior walls, the number, size, and layout, and accessibility of the units. The petitioner has indicated the proposed interior modifications are an estimated value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This dollar amount far exceeds fifty percent of the SEV, which I had referred to, and the SEV is only ninety-six thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And again, the estimated value of the interior modifications is two hundred and fifty. The ordinance states that once you exceed fifty percent of the estimated SEV, it must conform to the current ordinance requirements. Therefore, any use now on the property must conform to the provisions in the one-family residential zoning district. Therefore, the petitioner's proposal to establish five residential units, and again, they had a license for six previously, their interior modifications to establish five residential units and to construct a one-story, a small one-story addition to the rear as well as some off-street parking, need to comply with the ordinance provisions in the one-family residential district, which clearly does not allow for five residential units. So the petitioner at this point is seeking a use variance in order to establish five units, where there previously was six, due to the circumstances that I had just described. We've applied all the Balkan area standards for multifamily development thereafter. So based on the lot size, the petitioner needs a waiver from the minimum lot size requirement for five units. And they need a, variances related to the, to the proposed addition to the rear as well as the porch and steps along the side adjacent to the edge of the property, uh, and, and the balcony that's proposed on the, on the front, which has previously, was previous, but it's been removed and look, they're looking to reestablish it. Petitioner is also proposing to add some off-street parking to this location, which currently does not have any off-street parking. Parking that's provided is short of the ten parking spaces that are required for five residential units, two parking spaces per unit. The parking, the parking spaces need to be separated from the adjacent residential property by a six-foot masonry wall, which is absent, so they're seeking a waiver from that, and as well as a thirty-inch decorative masonry along, along the west edge of the property directly adjacent to the sidewalk. They're seeking a waiver from that standard as well. So the first topic of discussion that the board should, should focus on, in my opinion, is the use variance and whether to establish essentially a reduced number of units in comparison to what was there, based on the current circumstances of the renovation, the demolition that's occurred on the property and the fact that staff under the zoning ordinance cannot recognize them to proceed without these variances. At this point, we're unable to, to state to them that we would provide them with a building permit to establish five residential units, since the renovations are so extensive in nature. The nonconforming status of pre, six units has been, and are, under the ordinance, lost. So to establish five residential units, they would all the same waivers that they would if they were essentially building new. So, it's a very peculiar circumstance.
Just so I understand this, if they had left this, this, this building falling down, they were good?
As long as they took care of the enforcement violations? Yes.
If they tried to make it nice?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And that's the, part of the intention of, of nonconforming uses, identifying them and having certain provisions which allow them to continue and to encourage them to be renovated to a certain extent, but at some point is to eliminate nonconforming circumstances. Uh, they've done so in the fact that the extensiveness of their renovations far exceed that provision, which says the dollar amount that you can put into a nonconformity and still call it a nonconformity and have it stay there. They far exceeded that dollar amount.
So it was really the decision here tonight, we grant this variance or they get some dynamite? I mean, is that, is that what we got going here?
They could tell you there are different options that they have in mind. Mr. Murphy? Um, maybe I missed it, but has this been a six-unit structure on a single-family residential since the beginning of time?
I don't know about since the beginning of time.
Okay.
I don't know about that. My guess is it was probably carved up into more units than originally built as. I have no idea what it was originally built as, but...
Right.
Perhaps the property owner can lend some credence as to, at least when they purchased it, and how many were there at the time. But, uh, I, I would imagine that it was probably carved up into smaller units based on a reduced number before.
Right, which somehow happened and...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and then that's...
I have no record of it.
Right, yeah.
Other than I have records of when it was started, issued a rental license. Once it's issued a rental license, that's official recognition from the city that, that we understand that it's that number of units.
Yeah, I was just amazed that there's...
What was that?
I don't know the exact, uh, the exact, uh, I probably, it's probably had a rental license for, I'm gonna say thirty, forty years. I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna guess. We've had a rental license. We were the first city in the state to have a rental license program.
Okay, now I guess that's it.
Mr. Olback?
If we were to grant this multifamily, how long would that stay with this, um, prop, would it stay with the property entirely or until the house gets torn down or?
Yeah, any modifications that they do in the future would need to comply with the ordinance requirements. If they, if the ordinance, the zoning doesn't change and it remains a single-family home, if they decide ten years from now there's a fire or they want to demolish it and put up a single-family home, anything new would need to comply with the one-family residential standard, presuming that's what it remains. If they wanted to build another five unit, they would be right here, back in front of you again.
Two, two quick questions. Uh, wouldn't have enough parking to conform to two per unit, but I didn't see how much parking there would be. Wouldn't be ten, or would it be?
Sure, yep. Let's look at the site plan. Right now, there's, there isn't, there's, there are no parking spaces.
Right.
And they're proposing three. We did have a conversation with the building department, and I, and I think there was some resolution to the fact that it does not require a barrier-free unit or accessibility. So there is no requirement. In the report, I was originally informed that it may, may very well need to provide a barrier-free unit and a barrier-free parking space. So that's why I listed in the report, it, we could recognize it as two parking spaces, but that's not the case, so there are three parking spaces that are being proposed.
Second quick question. This is water under the bridge, but out of a curious mind, had this been renovated one unit at a time, there would be no need to be in front of the ZBA, but water under the bridge, I understand. But they would not have exceeded at any one time a fifty percent of SEV, very likely, and is that possible?
It's, it's possible on, on what comes across to the building department and what we, what we see. Um, yeah, these are very unusual circumstances.
Very unusual circumstances.
There's, our normal process, the process, is when somebody comes in for an in, an interior demolition permit or a siding permit or windows or, those permits are just, are reviewed by the building department. If they comply with the building code requirement, they're reviewed and issued. Planning office doesn't have any review of them. So there was no flag, shall you say, to say, well, look, they're filing for an interior demolition permit, we better, we know this is not conforming, we really better ask them how much that, that's gonna cost compared to...
Yeah, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Murphy, any plans to pave Delaware in the future? City Commission approved a special assessment at their meeting this past Monday. Okay, all right.
Any other questions? All right, is the petitioner present?
Uh, good evening. My name is, my name is Jason. I've been sitting there for a while. My name is Jason Krieger with Krieger Klett Architects. I have Patrick here. He's representing Tom Valente. Tom's out of town right now, so, um, we're here taking care of this for him. Just a little bit of history, which Joseph touched on. Initially, we came here with a proposed new building, uh, that was denied. So Tom went back to the drawing board. And initially, he looked at doing a single-family home on this. And when he looked at, and I wasn't involved entirely with his financials, but what I do know is this, when he looked at the, the money that he initially put into it, the land and everything else, uh, the cost to build it, and what he could sell it for, it just did not work financially for him. He came back to us and said, what we need to do now is just renovate what's there. But he goes, I don't want to just side it. I don't want to just put shingles on it, which is what he could do, and just put paint. He said, I want to do it right. I want to get good tenants. I want to do something really great. I know that... I know that Tom took some, a little bit of criticism from the public and the neighbors last time, and he honestly came to me and said, I want to do it right. And so we started to look at doing a major renovation, which is about $250,000, which is in excess of the SEV, as Joseph mentioned, and that was really the proposal here. We weren't aware of that trigger, to be honest with you. I've never come across it. And so when we filed for a permit, that's when we found out. So it's one of those things, you go, okay, well, we could have just slapped some paint on it, called it good, gotten some tenants in there, but I think Tom was trying to do the right thing here, honestly. And he did reach out to the neighbors. He had, I think, a couple of neighborhood meetings. Patrick, you were there.
I wasn't there for the first meeting, but we had a second meeting about a week and a half ago.
Sir, if you could just introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Patrick Van Lin, also a Royal Oak resident. Some of the neighbors are here today, I'm sure they'll want to talk a little bit. We had a great meeting. I think everyone's on the same page with what we want to do now, so a lot of the criticism that was, they had with the original plan or some of the communication that passed, I think, has gone away, and they seem to be very excited about getting this project done and what it will bring to their neighborhood.
Thank you.
So we're hoping that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's as we're moving forward and doing the right thing. There are three new parking spaces on site. That's not, obviously, per the ordinance, however that is improved. We did lower the density by one unit. We took two smaller units, one unit that was very, very small, and made it a nice two-bedroom. Again, he's trying to get better tenants in there. And I know that the street will be paved, and there's talk about maybe working with engineering to provide some cuts for parking along the street there. Items, I want to talk briefly about items J and K on the variance requests. We will put in a 30-inch screen wall. I would ask, would that be stricken? And that's K. For J, they're asking for a six-foot decorative masonry screen wall, and I believe that's along the east property line. I was speaking with the neighbor directly to the east of Tom just tonight, and what she requested is to do something that's more decorative, more like a nice decorative fence, whether it's wood or vinyl or something softer, more residential, if this were all to go through. So I would ask that if this does go farther, that that's a condition on behalf of her. The building shape and size is the same as what's there. We do have a very small, single-story bump out on the north that you could see right there. That's just for improved access to the basement. But it is what you see there, it will just have a new skin on it. The residents are used to that. There will be less units, and we don't think that this is going to create any more detriment as far as light, safety, welfare. It's the same thing that this neighborhood's been used to for a long time, only now improved. Defense parking, that's what we have, so we're available for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Krieger at this point? Yes, ma'am.
The parking cutouts haven't been approved. Do you have to work with the city on that?
That is correct, yes. And I believe, were you at the meeting when that was discussed?
Yeah, we discussed that at the last meeting with the residents, and it was a concern with them, and we agreed that we would go in with them as a group to talk to the city to address the concerns and hopefully work with the city planning to come up with a solution that's gonna work for the neighborhood and better for Royal Oak.
How many spots do you think that would create?
I think realistically...
I really couldn't say maybe eight. I'm guessing.
I think that's a safe assumption, eight to 10.
Yeah. And I think there was a question about, you know, what would happen if there was a stick of dynamite thrown in? I couldn't answer that. That would really be up to Mr. Valente. Thank you.
Mr. Olback.
Although you don't show it anywhere, how are you taking care of the waste and like, is it the disposal, like the garbage, is that gonna be along the street there?
Street pickup, yeah. Yeah, I don't, you know, we could look at doing a dumpster, but I really don't know if a development this size would require that. I think once a week, the residents would put their trash out.
So I was gonna say, if that's near where that basement access is, you could have, if it's down the street, then that means maybe you could have moved that basement access along the, what is that, west side? And if it would be possible to get a parking spot in there or not? I don't know if you guys...
I'm sorry, say that again.
I don't know the distance between the drive, between the back of the house.
Oh, to park facing south? I think we would have to, I really...
It doesn't, it looks like it's not enough.
That would be pretty tight. We would have to take the basement access and move it over to the, closer to the east. I think we were trying to keep away from the neighborhood to the east as much as possible in this proposal. And we're trying to stay right in the middle where we would not impact anybody.
Okay.
Any other questions? Not seeing any, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat, sir, and go ahead and open up the public hearing. Just like before, wait to be recognized by the chair. You have three minutes to address this body. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Ufath Ahmed. I am the resident of the 309 East Kennelworth, and I want to know when they are going to start the work, because every time we are coming in the meeting and something is coming up and nothing is going on. So I am getting tired of looking all that ugliness of my neighbors, and I want to, they had to start to the work fast. Thank you.
We will certainly ask them that. Is there...
I was just gonna ask you real quick. So are you in favor of this or against?
Yeah.
You're in favor?
I want, I don't want the anyways, I want the fence.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Let me finish, the public hearing first.
John McIntosh, 327 East Kennelworth. I've stood before this board on this topic already once, and it goes right back down to the simple thing, the use variance. I want to make for the record unknown to everyone that we hold no grudge against Tom Valente and the market. I think it's a great place. I think what his and his staff do there is a wonderful thing. I think what he does there is all good. What I don't like is Tom Valente and these people here wanting to continue being my neighbor. Okay? He, I lived on the street for 22 years, and I've looked at that house, and it's been an absolute dump with shady and questionable activities going on there over the years. Nothing has ever been done as far as cleaning the place up and so on and so forth. Now, we're at a pinnacle here. We're at a point now where the use variance, if it's granted and these variances are moved forward, we'll move forward into the next century with a multi-use house there, a rental property. We've just gotten done with, I've been here 22 years, with a house down there at the end of the street that is a dump. Now, we keep going forward with a house that potentially in 10 or 15 years could end up being that way all over again? Or do we look at the possibility of this property finally being developed according to what it's supposed to be, and it's a single-family home? It is a single-family neighborhood, and that's what needs to be there. I can't stress that enough. Now, the lot, I've watched all night. I'm supposed to be at work right now. I'm on my own time right now, just to come talk to you people, all right? I know you guys are all volunteers, but I'm not getting any of this right now. But the, oh geez, the, you talked all night about these lot sizes and all this kind of stuff. That lot is only 35 or 31 feet wide, okay? It's not even a 50-foot lot. We've got this tiny little lot on a corner, okay, that if you kept the house as it is, just as it stands, and rebuild it, I mean, just leave it as it is, re-side it like Mr. Valente wants to do with this nice little picture here and stuff like that, which is great, but you make that into a single-family house, what do you got? You've got a 3,000-square-foot house with three full bathrooms and a mother, a full furnished mother-in-law suite in downtown Royal Oak with a market next door. 3,000-square-foot house on that tiny little lot there. You don't think somebody's gonna snatch that up like that? There's money to be made here on a single-family home, and then we, as a neighborhood, get back our neighborhood as a single-family area. We are completely surrounded like a fort by all this development, and you guys have been here through all these years of all this development. We've got condos here, condos there, condos there, and then I got the expressway on the other, on the other side. But we're completely wedged in there now. There's very little room left on my, in that neighborhood to put any more buildings. It's a single-family neighborhood. That's my point, okay? What he's got planning is fine, but if you guys move through and grant this variant, I mean, the usage, we're gonna get a five-unit apartment building again. And I say maybe it's time to try a different tack and do something different. He's already spoken at these meetings that we've been to.
Sir, you're already a minute past, please try and wrap up.
Huh?
You're already a minute past.
Oh, I got three minutes here, I'm sorry. It says three. So, all right, you're looking at this side or something?
No, I've only got it on my computer. The camera's actually over there, and I can run it from here.
All right, all right. Yeah, don't hold anything against Tom and what they're doing. Oh, we went to the meeting, oh, the parking, that's the other thing, the parking. You know, you got three spots, there's no garbage, but they're gonna figure out for the garbage for five units on the street. Now, the parking itself is, you know, they're asking, there's no parking. So where's everybody gonna go for a snow emergency? If they can't park on my street because of the snow emergency, so where do all these cars go, okay? And the last thing for Mr. Murphy, you slipped out earlier. You said that Delaware was gonna be paved, providing, it's isolated for next year, providing there's time and money. We came up here already once, and the city already told us that they were gonna pave Delaware next year, starting in the spring, and it's already been agreed by everybody. Now, Mr. Murphy states tonight that it's too low requirements, time and money. It's like, so the city isn't quite telling us the full story, or are we gonna move forward, or the funds aren't gonna be available for the roads next year?
Sir, you're now twice your time, I need you to finish.
It's an interesting thing, but now I gotta go back. Oh, I also, the reason the pitchforks aren't here and the torches and stuff is because we decided to leave the mob and not bring it in this time, okay? Not because it's apathy, it's because we decided not to show this time. This is a lot better than what we got going before, okay?
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, not seeing anybody, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the side. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you, I apologize.
Couldn't make it, so she asked if I would present you with a letter.
Yeah, right there, sign. Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, I will now close the public hearing once again and bring it back to this side of the table. Mr. Krieger, did you want to make any comments?
Yep. I just wanted to address the one question about timing, I think was asked. It would be as fast as the, if this were to go through, it'd be as fast as the building department could review the plans, and we could address that. So a couple, three, four weeks. As far as snow emergencies, that's a good question. You know, Tom does own a couple of parking lots right there. I mean, I would think that Tom would allow his tenants to park in his parking lots if there's snow emergencies. And then I think just the question about shady business going on, and the whole idea about putting $250,000 into rentals to get higher-grade tenants, so I think that some of those concerns would be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm gonna bring it back to this side of the table for additional discussion. Anybody want to take first bite at the apple? Mr. Kroll?
I will make a motion to approve A through K.
And modifying J to...
Yes.
K was withdrawn by the petition.
K was withdrawn, modify J.
So you can make a, are you making a contingent upon the petitioner erecting a six-foot wood fence along the...
So I'm not gonna call it a wood fence, some kind of a fence.
We have a motion by Mr. Kroll.
I support for discussion purposes.
Second, give me a second.
Do you want to continue, Mr. Kroll?
Yeah. This thing, I guess, again, I'm gonna try to park myself across the street from it. I think what they brought back, to me, is much more soothing than what we saw the last time. It's much less commercial-looking, I think it fits the neighborhood better. I don't, part of my voting, yes, is I think this thing just keeps spiraling, kinda out of control. It started out as trying to fix a dump and has landed up into a use variance, and it might have always been one, I don't remember what we had last time, but I think we're discouraging people from fixing up their properties. It's not like someone coming to us to build this as in the Edison. This is here. I know that in conversations with Tom Jr. as well as Jason, I know that they were set to make this a single-family, but in business, there has to be logic to the economics of it, and they both assured me that there wasn't a logic to it. So at that point, we've got a building standing there. I think they've compromised from six to five, which is probably the least amount they can do and make this project economically feasible. I know they didn't, I think they wanted to go to eight or seven the last time, so there is some compromise in how much rent Tom is willing to bring back in against it. So I just see it as a combination of things that have kinda gone wrong in this, and yet I think that the, to say we're gonna leave that and do a single-family house, I think is unrealistic at this point. I think it's gonna sit looking like it sits right now until, or maybe just throw some, throw some paint up there or something and move to the next level. I don't see him leveling at this point, and I think he's worked hard at trying to make it something else and can't do it. So I think this is a compromise that I can level.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Kroll makes some good points. The place looks bad, it looks really bad. We all want it to be, you know, cleaned up. It sounds like it's been bad for a while. However, it seems like, and I don't know if this is the right word, a false choice to say, well, you can grant us these nine variances and it'll be cleaned up, or it's gonna look like a dump, you know? It seems kind of, you know, neither sounds like a great option with that. It's a small site, it's overbuilt, nine variances, parking on the street, snow removal, garbage, traffic. I just, I want it to be better, and, you know, I mean, Mr. Kroll makes a good point. Is it gonna be leveled to be a single-family house? I doubt it, but, you know, at the same time, nine, nine variances, that's quite a few.
Actually, let me ask Mr. Murphy a question to that point. I mean, is it safe to say that virtually anything that would come in front of us as it regards to this particular parcel would have variances B, C, D, and E?
No, most of those apply. We're applying the Balkan area and setback standards for a multiple-family development on this particular property, not a single-family. Even though it's his own single-family residential, what they're proposing is multiple-family, and that's where we apply those standards, and it needs to meet those standards, which it obviously can't even come remotely close. A single, if it was a single-family home that someone was building, there would be different setback standards. I don't know whether someone will be able to accomplish those single-family standards.
No, I follow what you're saying. I mean, what are the, the lot dimensions again? It's 35 by...
For some reason, I'm not getting the clarity, I thought I would. You happen to have a, for the site plan... You happen to have a, for the site plan?
Thirty-one wide.
Yeah, that's what I thought. This is less than thirty-five.
So 31 by what, Jason?
One forty-four.
Yes.
Doesn't even meet the minimum single-family lot standard.
And, and I, I think that's my point. I mean, even if, you know, let's just say that this site was just laying here blank right now, and somebody was just going to propose a standard 2,000-square-foot house with a 1,000-square-foot footprint on a 31-foot, on a 31-wide lot.
They would arguably, arguably be in front of you for waivers.
That's, that's my point, and I think we'd be talking about lot coverage and setbacks on all three sides. I think that's probably a safe bet. So my point being, whatever goes here, B, C, D, and E are going to be in the equation one way or another. So when you call it nine variances, I mean, obviously, that's what we're looking at, but practically...
Right. No, I, I agree.
So, Mr. Olpak, I think I saw you next.
I'm torn on this. Um, partially because, um, it could be, if this was torn away, you could go back to single-family use, which is what the whole neighborhood there is. However, this has been used as a res, as a rental property for approximately 40 years, if I recall, you stating, which was probably way before this master plan went into effect as to what was where. Who knows if they even had a master plan back then as to what they wanted where. So you, you have the unique circumstance of trying to require something that was possibly in line with whatever was going on now to have to change its use to meet, um, what is the current master plan. It's barely changing its outline at all, except for just to the north with the new access, and that's a minimal change at all. Um, they are reducing the number of units there, uh, which reduces the amount of, uh, parking that would be required a, a, and the intensity. So I, I think they're trying to do the best that they can, and I just, I'm torn because that whole area is one, single-family, and, and yet this has always been multifamily for the, for essentially a couple generations.
Yes, sir.
I would be in favor of this if we could grant the use variance for four units instead of five. And I don't know if that'd be amenable to the applicant, but, you know, that would bring it down and, and bring less cars in the street and just bring it under control, I, I think. So I just, I'll just throw that out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the way I'm looking at it is, the building has reached the end of its functional obsolescence. I mean, in, in a sense, it's, it's not viable the way it was, and that's why he had to go to starting to do some renovations. Well, the renovations then became the, you know, if you go from a, a single-family neighborhood and its own single-family for the, what I feel are probably the density and, and the parking issue, because I, otherwise it doesn't, I mean, that seems to be the two big reasons why you have a single-family areas and you have multiple-family areas and things like that. You've designated certain areas. So I think it's time to look at it and have it blend in with the neighborhood that it was, that it is now in for a single-family. And I, I don't think that would be a hardship for him. I think the, the walls are there. It's about reconfiguring the inside and turning it into a single-family. I, I love the design. I'm not against that at all for the, for that. I just don't think that we need to have a lot of people in that small area with just three parking spots. I mean, maybe if the, the lot were bigger and there was more parking available, I would see it differently. But that's my, that's my issue I have with this, just the density of the, the amount of people and, and all that brings with it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can appreciate those comments, and I would certainly not be voting for this positively if they were in front of us to build this here today. Um, I, I, I think of a, a bit of a realist, though, of what, what's really going to happen. Um, and I know that Tom did try to make this a single-family, um, and, and economically it wasn't feasible, so I don't know why it's going to be feasible tomorrow. Um, you know, I, I think we're, we're really sending a message that we're discouraging people from, from putting a facelift on their buildings, um, when we, I mean, this thing really kind of spiraled down, and all of a sudden, it's, um, it's like it's not there, but it is there. So to say, let's wipe it out now, well, that's great, but it's, I'm not writing a check, and I don't think you are either. So, um, there's some financial realities to go along with this.
Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, I'm in support of these, uh, these variances in order to get this property up to a beautiful property that is a benefit to our community as opposed to what we're looking at. And one of the main reasons I'm in favor of this is because it feels very much like a classic, uh, running into the hodgepodge of, uh, City Hall and building ordinances and state or, I mean, they've hired a professional, reputable architect who's tried to do the right thing, and he said, I had no idea that this could even come up like this, you know, that this sort of thing was a trigger to create this sort of set of problems. This very much feels like a hardship imposed upon, uh, you know, a, a, an owner of his, not of his own doing at all, that is, uh, just because of the tangled mess that our ordinances and, and city, and, and, uh, building codes. And so I'm, I'm very much in favor of taking this to, uh, something that's of a benefit to the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I really appreciate the redesign, because one of the problems I had was it didn't fit at all in the neighborhood, and it's hard to even consider a use variance when the use is changing so much. Um, but I still have concerns about parking, and I still have concerns about that it, it is zoned, single-family, although it, it has been used as multifamily for so long. And again, I don't think the financial considerations are something that we're supposed to consider up here. Um, but again, because it does fit into the neighborhood now, and it has been multifamily for so long, I think this is a better case for use variance than the last one, but I'm not sure that I'm there yet.
Anyone else? Well, I know, I, I will be in support of, of this. I agree that the design changes are certainly an improvement from what we had over, over last time. And the thing that's really weighing on my head are, I think, two different factors. A, like Mr. Pearl said, I think we had a owner who was really trying to do the right thing, and then he got zapped by conditions at City Hall that he wasn't aware of. And also the fact that, you know, the city has been issuing permits to this property, you know, we're, we're talking, you know, four decades, plus or minus. And the fact of the matter is, if they've been issuing permits for that long, a lot of the people who moved into that neighborhood moved into a neighborhood with a five-dwelling unit, or at that point, a six-dwelling unit, already in place. If this had been converted like two or three, well, it wouldn't, never would have been converted two or three years ago, I'm guessing, but the fact of the matter is, it's been there for as long as it has. It's been a condition of the neighborhood, and now we're going to take that condition and improve it dramatically. I, I see nothing but upside.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
It's six votes for the use variance, I believe. Thank you.
That is correct, yes. Anybody else? Then I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those, oh, I'm sorry.
We'll raise hands.
Okay.
I'll make ease.
Wait, one second. Can we repeat the motion? It was just a, a, approve all. Okay.
K was withdrawn by...
K withdrawn and J modified to meet the standards that the neighborhood would be happy with.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye. And the nays.
So the motion passes.
Motion passes. You're set.
God.
Thank you very much.
The dynamite was really going to make a lot of noise.
And that moves us on to item number D five, which is case number 170934. Public hearing on appeal of Elite Result LLC, petitioner and Christus Sarafa, owner for the following variances. We have 184 square feet of the maximum allowable, 1,800 square-foot total lot coverage. We have the requirement that an accessory structure garage have either a mansard hip or gambrel, or gambrel roof to permit construction of a second-story and ground-floor expansion of the existing dwelling and a rear yard attached accessory structure or garage with a flat roof for the purpose of a second-story deck located at 407 California. Mr. Murphy?
The petitioner is proposing to demolish the existing detached garage, and the plans that are in the packet illustrate a second-story addition and a ground-floor expansion of the dwelling. Also illustrated is the construction of an attached garage to the rear of the modified dwelling. Petitioner proposes a deck with rails atop the roof of the attached garage, which again is to the rear of the, of the, of the dwelling. In order to accomplish a deck, the roof has very little pitch or is essentially flat. And the ordinance requires that, specifies that accessory structures, whether they're attached or detached, have a mansard hip gable or gambrel roof to be compatible, essentially compatible with the principal structure. In this case, the flat roof, uh, does not meet that ordinance provision, is not compatible with the principal structure. So the petitioner is seeking a waiver from that requirement to have a flat roof for the purposes of a deck, patio, a deck. Additionally, the modified house with the attached garage would result in a total lot coverage of just under 2,000 square feet. And that's everything with a roofline. Based on this lot size, there was a maximum lot coverage allowable of 1,800 square feet. So they're seeking a waiver from the maximum allowable lot coverage in order to achieve the proposal that they have in front of you.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Mr. Olpak?
I was just going to ask, so just make, just double-check, because it's getting late and my head hurts. Um, if the garage wasn't attached, they wouldn't, would they still be over the lot coverage? Because it's, would be considered a detached accessory or accessory?
Nope. The calculation would be the same.
Okay. I, thank you. That's what you said.
Yes, sir.
Is the existing garage conforming, or does that not meet the side yard setback, maybe?
The existing garage? Let's take a look.
Existing detached garage? I thought that might be non-conforming.
Let's take a look at the survey. There's no setback indicated, but based on comparable measurements that are proposed, uh, that are illustrated on the survey, I would guarantee that it doesn't meet the side yard setback.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Curtis?
Uh, however, this is a smaller, the existing garage seems to be a smaller garage than the proposed. Can we get a, an estimate on whether we would have coverage conformance if they didn't attach a new garage and just kept the old?
Perhaps the petitioner would, they'd be able to, to run some numbers for it. I don't have any of those exact, I'm, I'm hoping he knows the numbers better than, than we do.
Yeah, right, right.
Since this is his proposal. So he may be able to answer that better than I.
Was there a site plan attached with this, Joseph?
Just the existing survey and the sketches that you see in front of you.
Okay, just trying to make sure there's enough driveway to actually get the car out of the garage. It appears that there would be.
Yes, uh, there, there, there are very, there will, there will be, there will be at least that 20 feet that you're referring to. They equal the distance of the depth of the garage or the depth of a car.
Thank you.
It, it'll probably be a little tight, but yes, indeed. And the petitioner can verify that they feel, will say comfortable with that, um, proposal and the resulting, because it's good that you bring it to their attention once again. You'll see that the garage, and I'll, I'll illustrate the sketch in front of you. The garage is slightly set, the proposed garage is slightly offset from the house. So they gain whatever distance that is, as well as the distance from the edge of the garage to the side property line.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are the petitioners present? Please come up. Thank you for staying up so late.
It's probably been a lot of fun for you guys, huh?
Hi, I'm Christus Rafa Robinson. I'm the owner of the residence at 407 California. This is my husband, Eric Robinson, and also he's Elite Result. He's a builder. Um, I've owned this home in this lovely Royal Oak neighborhood for over 15 years. While this modest 800-square-foot home was perfectly fine for me as a single woman, uh, it became somewhat cramped, to say the least, when I married Eric three years ago, as he has three teenage daughters, um, who visit us every other weekend. So while challenging, it was doable. Uh, but now Eric and I are actually adopting a baby. It's due, uh, November 16th. So, uh, once, once that happens, you kind of have to move really quickly and figure out how you're going to fit a baby into the house. So, um, we realized the need to, uh, expand our home. We are actually one of the very few last houses left on the block that's only one story. It looks like it could be more, but it's, it's one. So, um, we are going to go ahead and do the second story. We've opted to build, uh, the, an attached garage for obvious reasons of comfort and safety for both us and our children. Unfortunately, due to the small size of our property, we are only able to build a one-and-a-half-car garage under the current Royal Oak ordinance prohibiting more than 35% total lot coverage. A two-car garage is obviously more conducive to a two-parent family, and adding the extra 184 feet will only increase it to 36% of the total lot coverage. So it's really only 1% more. Um, so that's, we're hoping that you'll allow us to, to go with the two-car garage. Um, regarding the proposal of the flat roof, uh, because the homes on California have seriously tiny yards, I don't know if you've ever really taken a look at it, but the yards on California are super small compared to the yards on east, the south side of East Kennelworth. They're like two and a half times the size of our yards. Um, from what I understand, there used to be some alleyway in there, and because we have a park in front of us, they gave the extra footage to the people behind us. Um, so where was I? Um, so basically, by putting the garage, either whether it's a one-and-a-half or two-car, regardless of what you decide about the 184 feet, we're going to lose the majority of our yard. We don't really use the yard as it is, because it is so small, it's kind of silly almost. So this is why we want to do the, the patio above the garage. I mean, I really like to have some sunshine in my yard. I'd like to have some element of, you know, outdoor privacy. If we don't have, uh, the, if we don't get the patio, we're going to really just have no outdoor privacy at all. Um, the flat roofline will not be recognized as unsightly, because we're going to obviously put the patio on there. Um, it won't be too tall, because we're going to have it in line with our second story. And, oh, we've spoken with almost all of our neighbors on California, Rhode Island, Delaware, and the south side of East Kennelworth, and they've all signed my petition to say that they have no problem with it. On the contrary, they're all rooting for us, and, um, I mean, everyone really does believe it would improve the value of our home and the, the neighborhood in general. Um, we've seen one exact instance of this same exact structure at 611 East University. We actually went and talked to them yesterday. They were out, and they just were very friendly and let us talk to them. And they never had to go through variance, because they bought the house from someone else, but my husband went and pulled the information, and that one just passed without any problem with no variance at all. It just went through five years ago. Um, and then we actually also saw another house at 1418 East Fourth Street, which is similar, but even a little more strange, because it was a detached garage, and they have like a bridge connecting their house to their overhead patio. But ours is going to be attached, so I think it's a little bit more of a, a conformity to the rest of the neighborhood. Um, so for all of these reasons, we hope that you'll allow us to do this. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for the petitioner? Yes, ma'am.
Um, the signatures you were able to obtain, are they on both sides of you and behind you?
Yes.
Yes, we got them on Rhode Island, across the street, on the same street, and, um, the south side of Kennelworth, which is the, the one that borders us. And there's one house that has a Delaware address, and he signed it above it.
They recommend the exercise of going around and petitioning neighbors.
Yes.
We met everybody.
We met everybody.
It was great.
It was really nice, and everybody was so nice.
Any other questions for the petitioner at this point?
I guess I have, I have some. So if you could reposition that garage, and you, and you actually had a regular roof, just like the one you have, only maybe turn it and come in this way, would that not solve a little backyard patio area that you could have, or something like that? I mean...
Tell me what you mean.
So you have your little garage that you're going to demo anywhere.
The current garage, you mean?
The current one, I guess. So if it was, if it was turned sideways and got a little bit bigger, and you could The current one, I guess. So if it was, if it was turned sideways and got a little bit bigger, and you could come in like lengthwise and turn, would that give you some, I know, it's detached. I know it's detached. So I'm just asking about, have you ever thought, because that would give you some, you know, ground-level patio space and things like that, that you see, it seems to me that you're looking for that outdoor space, and you're looking for it on top of your garage versus at ground level. Because when you get on top of the garage, then you're looking, you know, I know your neighbors are fine with it, but maybe the neighbors in the future might not be so fine, as they see you you're in their, line of view, and they're in their patios, et cetera, et cetera.
I can't picture what you mean if we were to move the garage a little bit, I guess.
Well, right now, you drive in straight to it, I think.
Yep.
So if it was sideways
I see.
To the lot.
But still detached.
Move into that. And detached, no detached.
Right.
Right, detached. I think, Joseph, you touched on the point about the garage not being in conformance to the current ordinance, ordinance. It's literally at six inches on the property line. So as soon as we do anything to change it, we have to fall into conformity, and that would be, that'd be tricky with where it's, with where it's at right now.
Hard for me to tell with the aerial view and maybe the, the the depth of it. I mean, I was surprised to see that your house, that it was a fifty-foot lot, because honestly, when I drove past, it looks much tinier.
So small.
It looks so much tinier.
I couldn't see it, because all the bobcats were there today.
Allow me to just pass these around. This is six eleven East University, and that's very similar to what we're proposing to do.
And it was very well done. It's beautiful. It's a, it's a really nice outdoor spot. I mean, we're thinking about planting spices and things like that, and having a green little appeal up there. So it's, we're kind of excited about having that space and a little bit of privacy above the garage. We, we get it. It's not typical, but since we've seen it on a couple of them now, we kind of liked it.
The house, this house gets almost no sun as it is. It's kind of in a strange spot, so to actually be able to like catch some rays, it's like you almost have to be a little bit higher, because for whatever reason, I mean, we can't even grow a basil plant in our house. Literally, literally. We've tried. It's no sun gets in there.
And let me just say for the record, as there is nobody in the audience, I'm gonna go ahead and open and close.
Oh, boy.
Are there any other questions for the petitioners at this point? Anybody prepared to take action? Mr. Muller?
I'll propose to I'm tired. My mind is going, I want, yeah, yeah, I want to vote yes on this, so somebody else give me the words, because I'm just too tired.
Proposes to accept the variances as requested.
Thank you very much. Yes, now, my, my reasons, my reasons for that, which I should articulate much better. In the past, the idea of the flat roof and the patio on top has been sort of not good because of the privacy of your neighbors. Looking at the aerial photo of this house, you can see that the neighbor to the west already has this large garage. You're not like going to be on top of your flat roof looking into the windows on their house. They're also adding a second floor to this house, so from where the garage will be, you wouldn't be able to sit on that deck and see into the house at four thirteen California either. So in a way, they're so surrounded right now that they're not going to be perched up really looking straight, say, into the second floor of neighbors or down into their yard as much. It's a very small lot. This does give the ability of really doubling the space, because normally, your garage, that's it. You don't have any more yard space. That's taken up that much land. This is yard space on a deck above. I think it's sort of a clever approach here. And the house on fourth, I'm familiar with. In fact, I remember when we voted on that one quite a few years ago, even though there's no precedent set. But I really think that in a small lot like this, and the way the neighbors' houses are situated, that this is a, a pretty neat approach. And you came up with the eighty-four, one hundred and eighty-four square feet is one percent?
Yeah, roughly.
One percent roughly? Okay, so it, it sounds better that way than one hundred and eighty-four square feet. Anyways, those are my reasons, so somebody else can expound on theirs or disagree with me.
Mr. Olpak?
Do you support?
I, I want.
What Anthony's motion on behalf of Bob?
I think so, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Well, then let me go to the supporter first.
Oh, no, I agree with everything what Mr. Muller said. Absolutely. I, I had a point to make, but, oh, yeah. Now I remember. It's, it's removing the detached garage nonconformity, so I, that's a plus.
We haven't really turned down very many people tonight. Balancing side of it.
That's true.
Should I have next, Mr. Olpak or Mr. Klett?
Mr. Klett had it first. I mean, I thought you could possibly tighten the garage up with that splitting hairs at this point. And I can't read the dimensions. I can't zoom in here. But it looks like you have a pretty significant rise from grade to the first floor, so you need that staircase in the garage, which takes up space, so you need the width, so it makes sense.
You are right.
Yes, sir.
One of the hardships is if, unless my brain's just fried, is that there's nothing in the ordinance granting a flat roof or patio, so therefore, that's why they're in front of us. So that is a unique circumstance. I'm always for flat roofs, especially because they can eventually be used as garden roofs, and it's nice outdoor space. So I'm definitely in favor of that. Like Mr. Klett, yep. Like Mr. Klett, I'm a little concerned with the, the garage, but again, splitting hairs in one percent.
You know, the garage is much, that I just figured out, is about five hundred and thirty square feet, so much, much less than eight hundred.
Any other comments? And we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? You're all set? Thank you guys for being so patient with us. You got to see a lot of fun stuff tonight.
You guys have had a great time.
We watched number one on TV, thanks to Joseph giving me a tip earlier. We watched all that craziness with all the people coming up. We're like, I hope nobody comes up for us, and then everybody left.
We're actually very happy about Kennelworth, thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, that's, it's, it's way better than it looked fifteen years ago, trust me. Not that you guys already know, but I was gonna say something, but then I thought the neighbors would come and kill me.
Yeah, they'll get you.
All right, Mr. Murphy, do we have anything else for the good of the body? Mr. Motion?
Motion and leave.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Board and a founding member of the World of Nature Society that maintains nature parks, we have a large fundraiser every year.
But a member of that board called you.
Called me, relaying the message.
That someone had called you.
That the person from Fifth Avenue called him, stating they had given us a donation for five years, and that I should remember that. Not saying I should change a vote, but I should remember.